Okay, we'll call a meeting into order. At this time would everyone rise? And Clarice Sutter, would you please come forward from the United Methodist Church and give us the invocation, please?
Good morning. Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, we thank you for this wonderful and beautiful day. We thank you for the opportunity to serve in this community. We ask that you would bless all of the council members and the mayor and all of those who serve faithfully in this community. We ask you this morning to guard the hearts and the minds of those who lead this council, direct your path, direct our path, so that all may be served in this community. And God, we also ask that you would watch over and bless all of the military men and women who serve around the world. We ask you to bless their families, protect them as they serve for our, in our nation's behalf. We thank you for all of this in Jesus Christ's holy name. Amen.
Councilman Slackup, could you leave some pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republiquement for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for
Roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilman Slackup.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Councilman Simmons.
Here.
Councilwoman Simons.
Here.
Councilman Longkart.
Here.
All right, good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Mayor.
All right, this morning, let's go right on to public comment on agenda items. And this is a couple of public comment on agenda items only, please.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
As such a privilege to live in a country that we hire by our votes representatives, people to represent our opinions. I guess the Roman Empire was a pure democracy. We are representative democracy where we hire a few individuals to represent the whole. Government unfortunately, it becomes a monopoly. Fortunately, power corruption and after a while, power becomes more corruptible. We write rules to try and discipline ourselves, which reading the rules that are put upon the people on the council and the mayor makes it awfully hard to use the passion and have the passion that comes along with the desire to represent the people of Bonita Springs. I hope we don't stifle freedom of speech, although we do need organization. And I'm sort of disappointed in 9B that it's, that we have to do our laundry in public. I hope we can be loving and understanding. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good morning.
Good morning, Deb.
My name is Deborah Giambbo and my comments are also in regard to Agenda Item 9B, the question of reprimanding or censuring council member Simons. I was reading the agenda for this meeting and I was shocked to find this agenda item. My outrage prompted me to make special arrangements at work to be here and I will have to leave shortly after my comments to go back there. From my experience at council meetings and viewing meetings on TV, more than I'd like to admit that I've actually seen, I would like to offer the following observations and comments. Councilmember Simons has consistently shown herself to be a dedicated, engaged, and well-informed representative of the citizens of Bonita Springs. It is my observation that she consistently asks persistent, important questions about each issue and remains engaged in every discussion. Contrary to the accusations in the supporting document for this agenda item, on various occasions when council member Simons was engaged and asking pertinent questions, it was my observation that it was she who was frequently interrupted. Councilmember Simons consistently reveals in her questions and comments that she has a background on whatever the discussion is about, indicating that she has taken her time to research and study the issues pertaining to the discussion. What is the reason behind this accusation? Is it to silence council member Simons, to make her fit into some sort of cookie cutter mold of a complacent council member? In reviewing the supporting document for the agenda item, it seems clear that the majority of the reasons provided for this agenda item indicate that she was in fact engaged and dedicated. Her behavior in the meetings I have observed gives me hope for the democratic process in this country if all elected public officials took the interest and did the work required to participate the way she does prior to and during meetings. We citizens are certainly getting our money's worth with council member Simons. I would like to remember council members that council member Simons was elected and reelected by the citizens in her district without paid staff to help that happen. She was supported by her constituents in the past and we are ready to mobilize to support her again. We citizens of this city should feel honored that council member Simons is willing to dedicate her time, her intelligence and energies to make this city a better place in spite of the difficulties that come along with it. Her level of dedication is rare among today's elected officials who seem to put their own agendas and personal interests before those of the citizens in the community. With the hard economic times that this country is going through and this city as well, it is shameful that the council dedicates time to consider censure or reprimand of such a dedicated council member. Councilmember Simons is one of the good leaders dedicated to the citizens of this city and I respectfully urge you to vote against reprimand or censure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
William Simons. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Nobody knows Martha better than I do. Martha and I have been together for 24 years. In that time, and one of the reasons I love her is she doesn't like injustice. She cares and wants to help the underdog and she always, and she doesn't always has popular opinions, but she has supported you, Mayor, in every election and has helped you when you ask for help. I am very disappointed and hurt, and I know she is too. My wife is a wonderful woman. We have both sacrificed a lot for her to serve this city. This is not the thanks she deserves or the kind of action we expected from this council. This brings a bad mark on our city and does not build up, but tears down. This is the kind of process we will discourage other people from running, good people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Ms. Mayor. Councilmembers, Bob Bachman, current president of Bonita Springs Utilities. I'm here to ask your support for the service, special service charge for a portion of IBE. This is a community here that has asked the utility to take over maintenance of their internal wastewater collection system.
Bob, could you speak a little closer to the microphone, please?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
It's a part of the ongoing mission of the utility to assume operation of these systems. We've taken over approximately 40 package plants in the past, converted 5,000 septic systems, and this particular system has been a customer of the utility for a number of years after we took over the plant, but we have not maintained the internal plumbing system. It has a need for some updating, thus the request for the special service charge. These charges are assessed to the individual homeowners there, pay for the improvements, and don't impact the other members of the utility. It also will help reduce the costs to some extent of operating the utility and it will stop intrusion into the system that has to get processed with the system. It helps the environment by reducing discharge into the environment, and we respectfully request your support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Morning, City Council, Mayor Fred Forbes, for the record. My father told me, never make judgment until you walk a couple miles in the moccasins of the people that have to make the judgment. I'm here today as a, call it a friend of the council. I consider everyone on this council great council people. I think you all try and do a good job. You don't always agree, you don't always agree with me, but that's fine. That's what government's all about. I would urge you to be careful about any kind of a formal public censure, reprimand. I think it's a bad precedence for this council or any city council to take. I know that it, whatever led to bringing it on the agenda, it was discussed and considered seriously, but I would say that if you would do this, I believe it would create a bad precedence. I think it would hurt the image of the council, and I don't even know if any other cities in Lee County have done such a thing, but I don't, I think it would have long-term and mid- and short-term negative effects. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak, please come forward.
Good morning, Mayor.
Morning.
Ben Nelson. Good morning, board members of the City Council. My name is Juan Romero. I lived here in Bonita Springs for more than 25 years. I'm living in Mrs. Martha, where she's representing me. I can mention a lot of things, a lot of projects we have been working together, not just with her, but with the City Council, sports, activities, who they are, benefit our community. Martha has been very helpful. Whenever we have any situation, any concerns, questions, or projects we want to do, we're approaching her. She always come and no matter what time, what day it is, she's always working hard for the community, for the well-being of us. I don't know and don't understand why it's proposing to reprimand her publicly. I think we have, I prefer to be here to recognize her work because always has been doing a really good job and, you know, this is really something about us very much, not just me, but all the associates on the soccer complex, the soccer fields, basketball, and all my community, Hispanic community, supporting very much the work that Martha Simmons is doing all the time. And I seen few things mentioning about she's getting involved, but we asking her to be the voice of the people who cannot be here. Like anybody else, me, I gotta go work today and attending and supporting my family, but today is a very important day for us to come and talk and supporting her because I feel again, she's a good representative, she's working hard. It's any of you in the City Council, you know, this is a nice city and a nice community, and I think it's because the hard work of every one of you, including Mrs. Simons. So please think about, do this because I think it's, it's not just reprimanding her, it's reprimanding us too, it's the community, and I think, I don't think it's fair. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Good morning. My name is Bruce Fields. I represent the village in IBE. It's a pleasure to come before the council this morning. I really appreciate the opportunity. I want to speak on behalf of the BSU petition for the sewer system and the tariff issue. We, the members of the village, took a vote last, at the annual meeting in last January, and it was 100% in favor of this issue. So on the behalf of IBE Village, again, we ask for your support. I don't know whether you allow the members from IBE that have attended the meeting to stand in support, if you do allow that.
I'll take your word for it. How about that?
Okay. There are several here. So anyway, we'd like to thank the council and we certainly ask you for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well done. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Deb Harrop, Bonita Springs. I'd also like to speak to the green sheet item regarding the discussion of a censure of Martha Simons. It's really disappointing to see this on a green sheet. I don't think it reflects well on the leadership and management of the city, especially at a time when confidence in the city is probably at an all-time low. I have to say, I'd like to endorse fully all the positive statements made by the prior speakers about Mrs. Simons and her performance as representing the members, the residents of her district. She's not my representative. I'm not in her district. However, everyone I've spoken to in her district, in the city, has spoken, has just spoken glowing, in glowing terms about her, and my own impression of seeing her participate here is exactly what I would like to see. The style, style issues are one thing, but substance is incredibly important, and, you know, before what maybe a witch hunt begins, I'd like to personally say thank you very much for fully participating in the council meetings as specified in the code of conduct. And Mr. Mayor, I had to laugh at your use of the prose comment, quote unquote, your concern over the, quote unquote, "the free exchange of ideas that we so cherish," because a public censure of one's colleague is certainly not the way to go about that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please come forward.
William Lewis, Bonita. I write the newsletter, Let's Talk Bonita Politics. Mr. Mayor, I understand that this is the second woman that you brought up on charges. The first, Barbara Barnes Buchanan, you remember her. Gary Price fired her right here, while the rest sat in a cloak of silence. And after he fired her in front of the cameras, he left, leaving you and Councilman Spear on a feeding frenzy. Now, it's a coincidence, I understand it, now it's two women. Okay, fine. There's 14 charges, 13 of which I personally believe is bogus. Yes, the lady talks too much, but you're in charge. You could say, "Stop, enough, you said it, let's go on," but you didn't do that. Or if you did do it, it was a weak attempt, but okay. Now, one of the charges was that the staff complained that she bothered them. Who on the staff complained? Do you wish to mention that party? Rumor has it that it was Ms. Perino. Now, that's a rumor, but she's so overworked as the director of parks that no one visits, but that's okay. But if it's true, why is the staff so up in arms about someone coming and asking questions? Too many questions? Okay, but that's another matter, and that's one of the charges. I for one am against what you're doing under the cameras. Getting back to Ms. Buchanan, it ruined the woman's life. She could never get a job. Okay, that's all right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm against what you're doing. Okay? Simple.
Thank you so much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Morning.
Bob Hilliard, resident of Bonita Springs for seven and a half years, immediate past president of Bonita Springs Lions Club, current district manager for Lions International for Florida and the Bahamas. Martha Simons is a dedicated councilwoman. She's also a dedicated lion. As lions, our motto is "we serve," but there's a category that goes along with that, but not without each other. If we can't work together, we're not going to accomplish those goals that we need to accomplish. Lions Clubs International is the largest charitable organization in the world with over 1.3 million members in over 200 countries. Most people think that the Red Cross are the first ones on the scene. Not true. The Lions are. And lion Martha Simons at the Bonita Springs Lions Club has worked very diligently to see that those people in need in our local communities are served, and in the same capacity as a council member, she does the same thing to serve her constituents in this city. I come to you today in affirmation of this woman's ability, her dedication, and I ask you to drop this censure item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Yes, Alex Grant, 11-851. He's Terry Street, former city council member, and I was on the original city charter committee. One thing is unless there's a criminal charge involved as far as Martha Simons is concerned, then I believe a censure is out of order. If there are any problems like that, then there's the recall by the people of that council person. So that's, that's your way of handling that. That's number one. Number two, I'm going to speak on Item 9B, that's the, on impact fees by resolution. While this may be easier to do, I prefer this to be done more laboriously by ordinance for a better public discourse where these impact fees are going to be. I want to see impact fees going only to things I can see, touch, smell. Case in point, impact fees in an economic, for economic development area should be used only for such things as stormwater infrastructure, police station, library, city hall, riprap along the river, where the city boundaries are. Impact fees should not be used for salary benefits or any, or anything else like that for, of economic development programs. You don't want to be like Bonita Springs Fire Control and Rescue District who in 2000, between 2004 and 2009, collected excess monies in impact fees for fire, construction of fire station number four and did not apply that to the, to the principle of paying down of that fire station. By the way, the fire district's attorney has a complete detailed record of the impact fees that I have compiled. What he does with that, that's his business. But that's my comment.
Thank you very much, sir. Any other speaker wish to speak at this time, please come forward.
Good morning. John Spear, 25720, Creek Bend Drive, 30 year resident of Bonita Springs and former member of the City Council. I speak today in support of the proposal in 9B, and I would like to start by suggesting and pointing out Fred Forbes makes a great point. You know, you've got to be careful about this unless you've walked in somebody else's shoes. I've walked in your shoes for four years and everything that's in this green sheet is true and demonstrably true. Nobody can criticize Martha for her commitment to service, for her commitment to her constituents, or for her passion, but passion cannot excuse bad conduct. And nobody saw this more closely than the five of you or the six of you who were here when I threw my iPad across the room in a moment of anger and passion. My passion did not excuse my conduct, and you all know that you had a written apology the next morning in your in the baskets. I felt horrible about that. Some people that are not big fans of mine continue to take great pleasure in that loss of control of mine, but there you go. The charges are really broken into two pieces. Number one, the conduct at meetings. It's on TV. Everybody sees what goes on here. Everybody can judge for themselves, but those of us who have sat up there, you know, the endless questions, the endless dragging on of the meetings, the waste of staff time by having to sit here at the cost of probably 500 or 600 bucks an hour while the meetings last a couple hours longer, I'm not sure that that alone justifies reprimand or censure, but we've left it on the mayor and the mayor alone to try to control the meeting. And Ben, you've tried your best, but it's just, it's just been impossible to really rein things in. The second part of this, though, is really the part you ought to be concerned about. And, you know, the folks that have come here to support Martha probably don't know because they haven't heard the stories from the staff. They haven't heard about the interference with the code enforcement process, about Martha inserting herself in the code enforcement process at the investigative level, encouraging code enforcement staff to pursue people that she thinks need to be pursued and to lay off people she thinks to be, need to be laid off. They haven't heard the stories about the employee interference, the interference with HR, the interference with the hiring process, the interference with the discipline process, calling staff after hours and directing staff, not the city manager, but city staff to kick groups of people out of the park. I got a call about that and I, and, you know, Ben knows that happened. And most frighteningly of all, interference in law enforcement, interference and things like that. You all know the stories, you've heard the stories, whether you want to share those stories today or not, I don't know, that's up to you guys. I'm not up there anymore, so it's, you guys can deal with this. But this has been going on for six years. The staff has talked, probably some of you have talked to the extent you've been able to, and it's time to do the right thing. What that right thing is, you guys can figure out, but it's important that this, particularly this stuff in B, needs to be, needs to stop because it's totally, totally out of line. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else this time wish to speak, please come forward.
Good morning. Terri Lemain, Bonita Springs, for the record. I am here today to ask the City Council to please support our request of the Bonita Blues Festival, annual festival coming up. I would like to seek your approval for not only the special event permitting, but the cosponsorship of the event. I have been a very proud, dedicated member of the committee since 2006. We have put on a wonderful two-day event that not only showcases our beautiful city of Bonita Springs, but it gives back money to local charities. To date, we have given back over $55,000 to local charities. 100% of our net proceeds go back to the community, and we are non-paying staff members. We are 100% volunteer-driven. I would also like to give attention with your approval of the permitting that it also increases economic development within our community. We have a lot of people that come here from all over the country. They stay in our hotels, they eat in our local restaurants, because the majority of them are here for two or three nights due to it being a two-day festival. So with that, I want to thank you for your continued support with our request for a special event permit and the cosponsorship, and we will make you proud March 8th and 9th to be here in Bonita Springs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for your service. Anyone else like to speak this time, please come forward. Any agenda item? Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and close the public comment at this time and go to the consent agenda. Councilpersons and my fellow members, do you have anything on the list? Let's see, we've got A through H that you would like to pull?
I had some questions over answered by staff that I've moved to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slackup.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons.
Aye.
Councilman Longkart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Okay, we are at Item 8, public hearings. Audrey.
Thank you. The first is to amend a resolution. It's Resolution 12-20, which is the administrative code for the policy and procedures for processing land use extensions of development orders of building permits when mandated by the state. land use extensions of development orders of building permits when mandated by the state to eliminate the payment in certain circumstances when the legislative act prohibits charging for the processing. In April, City Council set up this process. It's a good process. Shortly thereafter, the legislature, in their divine wisdom, wrote up a new law, House Bill 503, effective July 1, 2012, that actually prohibits the city for making any charge. A lot of cities are still charging. I don't recommend that action. I recommend that if the person says that they're not to pay, and it falls within those legislative that they're talking about, not to pay. Now, there are some other legislative ones that you would pay the processing, such as emergency declarations. Tropical Storm Debbie, I heard was going to be eight months, an extension. Those you would require payment for processing.
Okay. Counsel, you have any questions for Audrey? Any comments? No? So Audrey, what's your... This is basically an affirmation of what the law is at this time.
It is. It's just correcting the administrative code to incorporate that Section 23 prohibition.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion over here. Councilwoman Simmons?
Second.
Second by... Yes.
Comment, public comment?
Oh, okay. We have a motion and a second. At this time, we'll take public comment on this particular item. Anyone who wishes to speak on this matter, please come forward. Seeing none, public comment is closed, and we have a motion and a second. Any other comment? Roll call.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longcart?
No.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Okay. What do you have next for us, Audrey?
Thank you. The next is a second reading and public hearing of the following ordinance. This is an ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs approving the petition of Bonita Springs Utilities, Inc., modifying its wastewater tariff to approve a special service charge for the villages in Imperial Bonita Estates Community, providing for an effective date. This is the second reading. This ordinance is a request for a tariff change, a special service charge for IBE. I have reviewed the affidavit application. It is legally sufficient. Fred Parton can provide any input as to the petition if you'd like to hear from Mr. Parton at this time. I would also request that, following this hearing, that we proceed with City Attorney Item B, so we can do BSU's items all at one time, if that's okay.
Thank you very much. Good morning.
Thank you, Audrey. Mr. Mayor, City Council, it's a pleasure to be here this morning. Most of you are aware of our background and history of bringing sewers to Bonita Springs. Mr. Bachmann and Mr. Fields pretty much laid out the background on the Imperial Estates Lot Owners Association area. IBE, just for your information, is broke into two parts. You have the cooperative area where everybody belongs to the co-op, and then you have a section of it that the properties are owned individually, and they have an HOA. This is the area of the individual property owners. In 1993, they hooked up to our wastewater system. At that time, we were able to, or they were able to, eliminate their package plant from that community and able to recoup that property for use as storage and other uses in that area. So we've been the wastewater provider since 1993. They've owned and operated their wastewater system since that time. You've got a nice detailed report. We went in, televised all the internal systems. We know what's there. It's in very poor condition, but we're equipped to handle these sorts of things much better than they are. You know, if you have something occur at 3:00 in the morning, we can be out there within an hour, whereas they've got to chase somebody down to try to respond. So we're well-equipped. They're members of the utility, longtime members, and we're here to serve them as well as the balance of the community. I think this is a good thing for them. I think this works fine for us, and we're happy to come before you. And I do appreciate the HOA there approaching us to take the system over, and I'm glad that we're able to work with them. I feel this is fair for everybody concerned, so be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Counsel, any questions for the representative from BSU? Fred, you had a series of, or at least a couple of, public workshops out there for them or with the representatives for them?
Actually, I had a couple of meetings. They approached me, I want to say a year and a half, two years ago, about the idea of us taking over this system. They had had some problems in there. They had to have some repairs made. And again, for them to do it, because they're not equipped to handle it, it's very difficult. And so they approached me. I agreed to take a look at, see what we could do. We're not going to go in and rebuild the entire system like we are some areas that we've gone into. In this particular area, we're going to go ahead and take care of some of the, you know, worst areas. We're going to eliminate the infiltration, some of the worst things. But over time, we hope to do a lot of this internally, in-house repairs, do like slip lining, pipe bursting, things like that, that you can go into older areas and upgrade their infrastructure versus replacing the whole thing. So they approached us. We looked at it. We came up with this number. They felt good about it. We feel okay about it, so we think it's a win-win.
Okay. Any other questions before I go to public comment? Yeah?
I was just going to say, just a comment. As you know, last meeting, I voted against moving this forward, and since that time, you and I have spoken, and it goes back to what happened a few months ago, and we've also spoken about that and look forward to speaking about it more. A few months back, we heard from all kinds of citizens from Bonita Springs, and, you know, nobody wanted to answer any questions. Fast forwarding to now, I have not heard from anybody from the city on this issue, so I will be reversing my vote and voting in favor of this.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else this time? Before I go to public comment? Fred, thank you very much. Do you have anything else before we go to public comment?
No, I don't.
I'll give you an opportunity. If there are any questions, you can come back up, okay? At this time, we'll open up public comment. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter, please come forward. Seeing none. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I'll make the motion we approve.
We have a motion to approve is our second.
I'll second.
That is a second by Councilwoman Martin. Any other comment? Roll call.
All right, whatever.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longcart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and forward Item 9B, which is permission to advertise the following ordinance in reference to new construction fee banking. Audrey?
And on this one, you'll notice it was signed by the city manager, Mr. Schwing. He wanted this to go forward even though he was not going to be here today. On this, this is a proposed amendment to the franchise, and under this amendment, when the city set up the franchise, affordable housing was a major issue. Now, affordable housing has taken lesser of an issue, and the issue is with ANCs. What this system sets up is, or Section 14 of the ordinance, of the franchise ordinance, what that allows is for the ability for, when the city purchases property, to have that, the capacity that is on that property, but for impact fees along with ANC. For water and sewer, it's ANC. I normally use impact fees because I think of roads and libraries and such, or parks. We're able to bank it and then use it off-site for another property, and we have always transferred that use by resolution. Currently, we pay a capacity reservation charge. This way, you do not have to pay the capacity reservation charge. A capacity reservation charge would only allow on the same site to use it once we started building on it. In this case, there's some mobility and being able to move it. So from an economic standpoint, there are some great advantages to the city.
Just to interrupt, define who... Or you said "you." You mean the city?
City, City Council.
The city only. City-owned properties, this does not apply to any other properties, correct?
Correct.
Good, I want to be sure that's clear.
This is only for city-owned properties, where the city would then be able to use it not just for affordable housing, but also for economic development projects. So if the city determines there is a valid, and when I say the city, I mean City Council, that there is a valid economic development project, it would come back to City Council, and City Council would determine whether or not to use the monies that are available through these banked ANCs or aid to new construction for that purpose. Lisa from Finance, Lisa Pace, can actually give you a better financial understanding. She wrote or drafted a portion of this green sheet dealing with the financial aspects, if you have questions as to that. This is a permission to advertise. This would have public hearings. We'd have a first reading on September 5th and a second reading on September 19th.
Okay. Thank you very much. John, do you have anything else to add or any other statement?
No, other than to say that, as Audrey indicated, this is kind of a combination effort through the city manager's office, finance, legal, and also our partners over at BSU to see if there was a way to craft a process that would be an advantage to the city in terms of economic development and not impact negatively BSU. I'd support going forward with this.
All right. Good. Counsel, any questions?
I have a comment. Our city manager, Carl Schwing, has worked very hard to make this happen. And to Councilman Grant's point, it needs, it has the relationship, as the DRGR does, to transfer development rights. It allows us to move money into places where we couldn't have moved it before, but with specific definition. It's a boost to the economic development plan, and I would fully support it.
Okay. Good. Bill?
Good morning, everybody. What about the fees that have been collected by the utility? It amounts to, I believe, 197. Am I on the right track on this?
You're talking about the capacity reservation charge that was paid every year?
Thirty thousand dollars a year that we've been paying BSU.
I don't believe that they are giving a refund, but they are setting it up so this will be progressively going forward.
Are we going to get the money? Is that what you're saying? Forward?
Going forward, you will no longer pay this.
Yeah.
You will no longer put money to BSU. Instead, if you choose to bank property, because there may be times where you choose not to bank it, if you choose to bank the property and the monies go into that ANC bank set up already by Section 14, you have the flexibility to use it for affordable housing, which you've always had the flexibility to do. Or alternatively, you could use it for economic development as defined by resolution by you for specific property. And that's no different than if we gave money to Habitat for Humanity for impact fees or aid to new construction. We do it by resolution today.
What about Maywood property? The same thing is going to happen with that, too?
Yes, sir.
Okay. For the audience, there's approximately $240,000 that the public utility has received. And this all came about some time ago. A constituent asked me to find out why we were paying X number of dollars to BSU, and it wasn't me. It was a person, a concerned citizen in the city. And of course, all this... I'm trying to understand why the 197,000, why it wouldn't come back to the city since they're willing in such a way. Now, I don't know where they put it because it's a private corporation, but it concerns me that we'd be paying all that money.
Sure.
197,000 and 40,000 for the other property.
If I could respond to that?
Sure.
I believe that the answer is very similar to what you have with East Terry. You made a short-term decision, and that short-term, and East Terry was the traffic light. We rented a traffic light temporarily because we were going to make improvements in the next year or two, and then those improvements were not necessary, or they lowered on the totem pole. Same thing here. You pay a capacity reservation charge, and any property owner pays that capacity reservation charge. They're treating us the same as any other property owner in the city of Bonita Springs or anybody else within the franchise area, because the franchise is beyond the city of Bonita Springs, a capacity, so they don't have to go in and pay the new construction costs over again. So there's a benefit if you're only going to use it for a few years. But if you take longer than a few years, it is not cost-appropriate, you know? And that's a decision because it was a short-term decision that wasn't looked at from a long term for both Maywood and Bamboo, I think.
I'm not convinced that we should not be getting a rebate from Bonita Springs Utilities, based on what I know. And I'm obviously concerned about that from the beginning, and it was a constituent that brought it to my attention. And this is something that we all should be looking at in terms of looking at the total picture. And I have a different take on this, but specifically, I'm concerned with the city and what we pay, and it's our responsibility to always look for those kind of things. And when I uncovered this, I, you know, I know we worked out a deal. I understand that. But I'm not happy with the deal in terms of the large sums of money that could be put into the supposed EDC. It would be about 240,000, which would be a very nice bump to utilize in some other fashion. But that's my comment. Thank you. Thank you, Ben.
Good. Fred, could you come forward for a minute and explain the ANC fee program?
Sure.
I mean, I think I have a pretty good idea. Once someone builds something and they give you an ANC fee, you use that money and build infrastructure with it, so it's hard to give it back, isn't it?
Exactly. I need to simplify the thought process on this. The affordable housing credits that have accumulated over the years, that was negotiated when we did the original franchise, as Audrey mentioned. That was something that was near and dear to everybody's heart, trying to get more affordable housing to the area. And because they were not paying the monthly capacity reservation fees, there was no guarantee for that capacity. If we had it available, okay. If we didn't, then you would not be able to recoup that until such time we had excess capacity. So there was a certain amount of risk with that. Then you had the other pot, where you had acquired some of the properties that had numerous units on it that had paid impact fees over the years, and there was a thought at that time that they would be used for other things, and you wanted, you chose to maintain those credits so that if you ever built on those properties, you could apply them to whatever the use may be or that you would choose to use on that. And that's what has been paid for the past X amount of years, however long that's been. But one of the things, Bill, to help you understand from our perspective, probably 70% to 75% of your costs of the utility are fixed costs, meaning that whether you use a drop of water or whether you use the sewer, the utility is going to incur those costs. The operation and maintenance of the facilities, the grounds, the staff. When you actually use, have consumption, then the chemicals come into play, electricity, and a lot of those big costs. So that's kind of the difference. So we were maintaining that capacity for you over time, and it was available to you. And now, you're taking a position that you don't necessarily need that guarantee, but in order to move it over into other pool of credits, we need to redo the franchise and include economic development in that definition. You're going to be the ones that determine what applies, what you can use this for. That's your call. But, you know, it's going to be if capacity's available. Today, it's not a problem. The next three to five years, I don't see a problem. But beyond that, there's, you know, no guarantees in the future.
Well, thank you, Fred, for that. I understand what you said, and I'm only, what happens if someone hadn't looked at that? I wonder if it would have still continued, because I don't know if all the council people realized, and I don't know because, you know, that large sum of money every year was being done. And I only bring it to the fore because we need to make sure that we understand, especially up here, exactly what we're doing with other people's money. And some people don't like to talk about dollars and cents, but the country needs openness so that we understand all those things, and that's all I'm going to say about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Yes?
Counsel, I agree with you totally. The issue, though, is, and this is previous council, and I'm not faulting them, but they went into a contract, and the contract was the city will continue to pay that in order to attract economic development. It wasn't a great contract. It didn't work out well. And part of it was, we were under some assumptions. It simply didn't work, that council was. But in fairness to what BSU is doing, they're giving up future revenue in order to support economic development in this case. And we had a contract, didn't work, but I think BSU is trying to work with the city and the EDC to make this thing come out right in the future.
Okay.
Can I just make one comment, Ben, please?
Yes.
The Bonita Springs Utilities is going to have increased revenue ongoing for a long time to the benefit of the utility because of the, when we come out of this recession, they'll do very well because of their fee structure for all of us that are current users. And I know that the income for the utility will be increasing, so they will be able to provide all the service.[1742.11] should, will be able to provide all the ser, we have the best water in the, in the, in the country, but their financials are gonna be enhanced dramatically by the change in the atmosphere in the country. Thank you.
We can only hope that we will all do better in the future.
That's right.
Uh, any other comment? Would you like to move this forward, counsel?
So move?
We have motion to move it forward. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Go ahead and move this forward. Any other comment? Roll call, please.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Uh, no.
Councilman Longheart?
No.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye. Okay, the motion carries. And Audrey, have any other questions regarding that? Are you okay?
No, that's it.
Okay, item C.
Thank you. And this is a continuation of a second reading that was held on August first. This is an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs amending certain sections of the zoning ordinance, amending four dash three seven seven public hearings, four dash three eight one duration of rights conferred by adopted master concept plan, amending the following use tables, four dash six five three, four dash six five six nine four, four dash seven one four, four dash seven three five, four dash seven nine one, and four dash nine three four, amending four dash twelve nine seven to require a special exception for all keeping of alligators and other certain animals, amending Division sixteen farm produce stands, U-Pic operations, roadside stands to permit farmer markets and community gardens by amending four dash seventeen eleven through four dash seventeen fifteen relating to farm produce, creating four dash seventeen sixteen farmers markets and four dash seventeen standards for community gardens, amending Division seventeen fences, walls, gates, and gatehouses by amending sections four dash seventeen forty-one through four dash seventeen forty-four, amending four dash twenty twenty parking, amending section four dash twenty-one ninety-one measurement permitted encroachments to permit open decks, amending four dash twenty-one ninety-four related to setbacks from bodies of water, amending four dash thirty forty-one temporary uses, and creating four dash thirty-one oh five to prohibit large metal buildings, super sheds, and residential districts providing for conflicts, severability, codification, inclusion in code, scrivener's errors, and an effective date. Counsel, since your continuation, the ordinance was amended on the second page of the green sheet. There's a summary, and there's a more extensive summary provided by John Dolmer. I pointed out that in the summary, that the uses that were taken out for daycare facilities, healthcare facilities, model homes, and by taken out, it means you're not going to allow it to be done administratively. It would be by special exception. And the city council still having the possibility of looking at proposed changes to bed and breakfast, Lee County Sheriff's Office substations, post offices, produce stands, private onsite recreational facilities, and non-commercial schools. I also want to point out, since our last meeting, I had a conversation with Department of Agriculture and Consumer Affairs, their general counsel. I made some minor modifications to our agricultural components to respect Florida statute, section six oh four dash fifty, which exempts from building permits or from local ordinances, certain agricultural components. And I also made the change, we're currently transmitting to Department of Economic Opportunity, the comprehensive plan changes, and that the effective date, if applicable, for certain components of this will not go into effect until after the comp plan is changed.
Okay. John, I, I imagine you have a presentation for us.
Good morning, Mr. Mary.
Good morning.
Only if it's necessary.
It's necessary, I would believe. Am I not right, counsel?
To start off, let's go through, I know Audrey gave a brief synopsis, but the items that we agreed upon, because it's good to start off on a good note. Things that we all thought were a good idea at the last hearing include requiring applicants to provide an updated master concept plan if this council approves a plan development with changes. So if you condition an application at hearing, that applicant would then need to reflect that change and submit the plan to our department. Second item, four dash three seven seven B seven, simply provides a process for plan developments which are remanded to the zoning board. Currently, you have the option to remand a case to the zoning board, but there's no process for us to handle it if you do. Probably better to accept a process prior to someone going through it. You also thought the idea of community gardens was a good idea in the following zoning districts, agricultural, single-family, multifamily, mobile home, RV, and plan development. Associated with that, you also agreed with the definitions and development standards for community gardens. Fire station, forestry towers, produce stands, those were items you thought should be administratively approved. And you also thought it was a good idea to require a special exception for the keeping, breeding, or display of alligators or venomous reptiles. These are the items, and City Attorney did a good job of outlining these, that you did not want to discuss any further, and you wanted to leave under the current regulations. Daycare, adult and child, healthcare facilities group one and two, Lee County Department of Transportation Maintenance Facility, and a post office. These are the items we're going to go through today. There was discussion on how to extend plan development, master concept plans. There were several uses that were being proposed to change approvals within the agricultural zoning districts, farmers' markets, changes to the regulations of fences and residential project walls, setbacks from bodies of water, and what I'll call the shed ordinance, but we refer to as metal buildings from residential zoning districts. Currently, for plan developments, once you have approved a project and the effective date comes and goes, that applicant has five years in which to either complete the project, or to complete at least twenty percent of the site work. Recently, we've seen a number of plan development applications which have not done either, mainly because those that own the property or plan to develop the property didn't see a market for it. So we've seen several requests for extensions. And in those requests, what will happen is an applicant will file with our office. We will review the application. We'll advertise the hearing. We'll take it to the zoning board. We'll bring it to, to city council. And to date, city council has approved all of these requests. Lee County has already started making some changes to increase the amount of time that a master concept plan is valid. And there's a pretty good reason for it, because they don't tend to be controversial, and the processes that currently stance tends to be lengthy for the type of approval you're getting. After proposing a modified version of this to the LPA, what we have come to after their hearing and two of your hearings is, the duration of a master concept plan will remain at five years. At the end of that five years, or prior to that five years coming and going, an applicant will be able to file with our office, and we would be able to administratively extend that plan development approval for a period of two more years. If they have not completed their development, or if they have not completed twenty percent of the site work within their property, they would then have to come to this city council to request an additional extension, and that would be for another two years. There is no ability for anyone to apply for a third extension. So currently, as the regulations are proposed, you would not be able to have a master concept plan valid for a period of more than nine years. The only real change to this would be if an applicant was also applying for a development of regional impact. Those developments, as you know, they're reviewed not only locally, but by the Regional Planning Council and by the Department of Econo, Economic Opportunity. And approvals for those developments include a build-out date. Now, we have never attached master concept plan validity to the build-out date, but it does make a lot of sense. If the Regional Planning Council has reviewed it and, and estimated that it will, a project will be built out in a certain year, state of Florida has agreed on the same year, and you, by essence of approving that development of regional impact, have agreed upon that same build-out year. Why would we not also attach the validity of a master concept plan to that date? It just seemed to make sense to us. So this kind of goes through what I had just covered. Two extensions and DRIs who be tied to build-out dates. And one of the other weaknesses, this kind of goes along the lines of, of the remand procedure. Right now, in our land development code, there is not a process for master concept plans which have expired to be reinstated. Now, we have reinstated several of them. We've taken them through the hearing process, and council has, has blessed them, and they have become valid master concept plans again. But it makes us feel more comfortable if there is a specified process in place so that when an applicant comes in, maybe they purch, it tends to be when someone has purchased property, and it has come with a master concept plan that has expired maybe by one or two years, and they want to reinstate that, that we can sit down with them and explain to them exactly what they need to do and exactly how they need to do it, and point to certain sections of our land development code as proof. Are there any questions on, on the concept plan before we change subjects?
Why not, why don't we take these one at a time, instead of going through the whole thing and then coming back again?
Yes, that's why.
All right. And, and let's start with, if you can go back to the duration of rights for plan developments. And counsel, do you have, do you have any questions or comments concerning that? And as I, as I understand it, to kind of paraphrase here, correct me if I'm wrong, is to keep it at five years, the minimum of twenty percent, unless a minimum of twenty percent is constructed. If they come in for, if the applicant wants to extend that for two years, you're making a proposal that it be done administratively, according to the rules that apply at that time.
Yes, sir.
And that if they want to, and then after that, after that two years, which would be a seven-year period, they can come to city council. After they come through and check with you first, application goes to you, then to city council, and city council would approve the next two years.
That is exactly right.
After that, if they haven't done twenty percent, it's done.
They have to come back in for a new approval.
They gotta come for a new approval.
And just to provide a little bit of information, the requirements for submittal remain identical. We're not changing what you need to submit for an extension, for the administrative review, so it'd be the same as it currently is. And when an applicant comes before city council for an extension, you would also have the right to review that application to make sure uses, intensities, and densities are still appropriate for that site.
Okay, and before, before we go to comment, explain, the time period is not consistent with DRI build-out dates?
Yes, sir.
Which time period?
When the city council approves a master concept plan or plan development and associated master concept plan, that is valid for a period of five years before it expires. A typical DRI could be fifteen to twenty years. So there is, there is a significant gap between what the city has looked at for a valid master concept plan, and when the state of Florida has assumed that project will be built out. What we would like to do is tie the plan development approval with that build-out date associated with the DRI. And if there are any changes that would be made to the DRI build-out date, the master concept plan date would change along with it, so that those two are identical.
Okay. Would it be all right if we, counsel and staff, would it be all right if we consider non-DRI projects first?
That would probably be a very good idea. Yes, sir.
And then we can talk about the other. Counsel, Bill, I believe you had a question or comment?
Well, I just want, and it's on four three eighty-one. I have a difficult time with, after five years, administratively, you can do what you want to do without bringing it back to the council at that time, because most, by that time, most people will not, some of us will be here and some of us won't. And I, I just don't think it's fair to the, to the council people that are coming on. I think it should come back to the council after five years, period, and make sure every council has an opportunity to review the decision that you might make. And I, I'm firm on that, and I'm not gonna change my opinion on it, because I think that that's the best way to do it. Five years is one thing, but two years administratively, not for me.
So, yeah, what you're suggesting is it remain the way it is right, right now, which is five years, and then the, every extension, I'm, I'm sorry.
Comes back to council.
Currently, I believe there is some administrative extension. There isn't? Okay.
Well, it's good that you both agree. But you don't. How, how is it, how is it being interpreted?
Currently, when, when an applicant comes into an extended master concept plan, they are sent through the public hearing process. And that's the way we have handled it. That's the way that those applications have been processed, and those are what you have seen.
Right, okay.
When they've been presented to you.
So that, Councilman Longheart, that's your suggestion, that it remain the way it is right now?
It comes back to council.
Counsel, do you, do you have any other comments regarding that, or any opinions?
I do.
Yes. Councilman, Councilman Simons?
Thank you. I concur, concur with Bill, but let me ask you, is there a change here? You said five years, and then administrative approval, and then they'll come back in two years after that, if I'm incorrect about that, but that, that would be a date in which, at the seven-year point, I guess, that certain items could be reviewed and changed. What, that is not currently the issue at this time. So I would take a blended approach to this, and that would be, no offense to staff, but I really like to keep things in the public so the public knows, you know, what's going on with their community. And Councilman Longheart made a good point, because as we change councils, whatever the feeling of people, people is, that what's decided before could be subject to change. And I also like to keep things in the public, so people know what's going on in their neighborhood and, and can keep up to date. So I'd like to see maybe a blended approach, where I don't want to see giving away the authority of council, because it starts to weaken this body and the representative government we have. So I'd like to keep it to, bring it to council, but being able to do what you said we could do at the seven-year review at the five. Do you understand that, Mr. Longheart?
I got it.
Awesome.
I, I do not, however. So you're, you're saying that we do, at five years, you want to go ahead and bring it back to council?
Right.
Right? And then after, and that extends for a two-year period?
No, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
So that we don't have to have the two-year period. Is that correct?
All development plans would be for seven years instead of five years?
Well, you could do it that way, too. So instead of coming back at five, you'd come back at seven, and just, yes?
No, I was just gonna say, so when we're looking at the, the validity of a master concept plan, are you saying that, that this should be valid for five or seven years?
Well, what I'm saying is that if it could come back at five?
Okay.
Okay? And at that time, do the review that you would do at seven. I mean, to me, having two-year window there can be somewhat, uh, create sort of an indecision. Did you not say, yeah?
Well, it, as a matter of fact, they're both the same review, right? The, the one you would do at two years, and one you would do at down seven, or nine, nine years would be the same, or whatever.
They are the same review, however, the council, under the proposal, would have the authority to review residential densities, commercial intensities, and the schedule of uses. So there could be amendments made to it as part of the extension request. If Councilmember Simons, if I understand her correctly?
Right.
What she's saying is there would not be an administrative extension. But the time periods proposed, which are currently in place now?
Right.
The five-year validity, a two-year extension, and the possibility of a second two-year extension would remain in effect, but all approvals would go through the city council.
That would be correct. And, you know, we have a record here of being very friendly and approving. I mean, I, I haven't seen us not approve. So I don't think that's gonna be a problem there. But it does help us as we, we continue to evolve in what standards we're raising for this community, to help those coming out of the ground to come to standard. So, and as the council changes.
So, so you agree with Bill?
And I, I don't.
Sort of. It's a little different.
And I don't, I've never seen this council provide additional issues or anything unexpected to any applicant that's asked for an, an extension of their master concept plan. The purpose behind this request was not because we want to handle these ourselves, was mainly to be more aligned and competitive with what surrounding jurisdictions were doing in terms of review. It, I don't think there, there is an opinion amongst the development community that the, the city council has ever caused problems or delays when they have been necessary. But I, I think when you tell someone, we can approve an extension administratively, and it'll take you about three weeks, or we can send you through the public hearing process, it's just gonna take you four to five months, they tend to be more comfortable with the administrative process. So it, I, I don't, from a time perspective, it seems.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
That was the purpose behind the request. But I, I do understand the, the intent of bringing it back to the council, and I.
Okay. Yes, let's find some more people to party here. Go ahead.
The, the point made at, at the end of the dais is, is correct. And we have had an instance, since I've been on council, where we, where there was a developer who came forward asking for an extension, and there'd been some unintended consequences on waters. And we had the opportunity then to put it out in front of the public. The public commented on the issue. The issue was resolved when we extended it. So I would agree that we probably need to have more public hearing.
In other words, you would agree that we would keep it, keep the system the same as it is now?
Yes.
Okay. Any, any other comment?
I, I don't need to pile on here. I feel we need to keep it open, public. Not that, you know, like I said, there is no I and team. We are a team here, but there's, be a chance for citizen input and discussion. So all in favor.
Okay. And so at, at this time, there's, I think, I'm sensing a consensus here that it remained the same as it was. Now, yes?
Just so I understand, remain the same means take out the administrative extension? Yes.
Well, it doesn't, the administrative extension doesn't exist. We want to keep it the same as it is presently, not as it presently is in the proposed document. Not as proposed as it is.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Uh, that was not correct. Is that correct? That's not correct.
That's not what I understood.
As I understand.
Okay. Well, let me hear what John understands.
Yeah.
John, explain.
I had heard Councilman Simons state that there, there was some language that was in our proposal that would allow city council to review density, intensity. that would allow city council to review density, intensity, and the schedule of uses as part of your extension request.
At seven years?
Yes, sir. Well, it sounded like at the five years and at the seven years.
At the five years and the seven.
So that would be included in both extension hearings.
You know, and presently, that isn't, that isn't within it.
Right.
It's rather gray. This would be more specific.
So you want to be able, the council to be able to, and for staff, to use as part of their guidelines to use density, intensity, that type of stuff?
Yes, sir. This would be something that...
Include that language.
It's gray as whether we have the authority to bring before you, under the changes in the text that's presented, it is much more clear. So if council wishes, we can include that portion of the text and remain consistent with what's there for the five-year initial period of validity and two, two-year extensions, which would be approved by the city council.
Mayor, may I ask?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, my understanding wasn't so much about intensity and density as much as community standards for landscape design, lighting, you know, that kind of stuff. You know, the more cultural aspect, if you speak, the architectural aspect of the community that's being created. And I don't know if there's a compromise here, do you need to have a five- and seven-year approval? Could it be a five-year and nine, so that it comes back at the five and then it comes back at the nine? So that seems to follow, or four and four, or six and 10, or something like that, you know, that you eliminate one of those approvals, because when you're coming here at five years, then you're going to come back in two more. It seems to me that that is a burden and causes some insecurity in the process.
We can have master concept plans valid for as long as this council would like. We can set it up so they never expire.
Originally, one of the drafts that was presented and was taken out by council was where we distinguished the size of the development. So if you had a small master concept plan that had the five years, and then we had a larger one, something that had more community impact, would be, I believe, seven years. But council asked that that be removed.
Okay. Council, just to chime in here, I agree with Councilwoman Simons that I think that doing the density and intensity at seven years, I think that's just way too soon. I mean, once you've approved something like that, I think it's way too soon to consider those type of criteria. At nine years, fine. I think that, you know, that nine-to-10-year period, things may have sufficiently changed to where you need to look at that. So either way, council, if you want to do a stepped, a tiered approach, like I believe that Councilwoman Simons is proposing, which is to do five and then nine, or to do five and seven, come into council. Either way, as long as that density and intensity isn't considered until that nine-year period.
And Mayor, I think that's wise. But at the five-year, to be able to look at the standards for architecture, well, that we don't change those a lot. We're trying to create a standard, but is, can that be considered at the time? I don't want to give you a specific example, but there's stuff that was approved way back when that does not comport with today's standards. And so what we see coming out of the ground today, we've made decisions about what we want to see in our city that's different than happened 10 years ago, and these are not things that I would say are hugely expensive, like changing density and intensity, but that are things that would help improve the character of our city, and we've decided that that's what we want.
Right. And explain what you would consider under this proposal.
Right now, the language as it's currently written states, "Prior to granting any extension, city council will review uses for compatibility with existing and approved development, and may remove uses or add conditions to make the use consistent with a Benita Plan. City council may approve, deny, or limit the requested extension to a period less than the applicant's request. The decision of the city council is discretionary. A master concept plan that has not received a development order and diligently pursued construction prior to the master concept plan extension expiration may not receive a second extension, but may be reviewed in accordance with Section 4-373." Which is basically a...
But staff, when staff starts to look at the master concept, or wants to go ahead and look at the master concept plan, what criteria do you look in doing the extension? And do you look at these individual things like buffering and that type of thing? Do you look at that all over again? Audrey, would you like to chime in here?
Yes, I just want to chime in that there's a difference between a master concept plan and a development order.
Right.
And the development order is where you're going to find the lighting standards, the changes in lighting standards, where you're going to find the buffering. The development order is where it's going to be the latest and greatest standards. I mean, you're not going to have an MCP go for an extension if there's a development order already issued. I mean, generally, that's not going, I mean, it can happen.
Important point. So what we're talking about here is a plan development, right? And, but once they come in for a development order and they start construction, it's still going to have, they're still going to have to come through for the renewal.
It'd be current code. Now, the only thing is if they have a deviation, like, let's say a buffer deviation, they would still have the right to have that buffer deviation. That's what was provided in their zoning ordinance where they got the deviation.
What I think the concern is, a lot of the standards that we include in development orders are in Chapter 3 of your land development code. A lot of, all of your zoning is included in Chapter 4. If someone is applying for a development order, unless there is a specific condition, deviation or approval that allows them to do, or requires them to do something specific, we enforce the current regulations for those sections as they are at the time the application comes in the door. Now, there are exceptions, if, like I said, for deviations, or if there is a condition that maybe at the time of approval was more stringent than your land development code. But as time has gone on, the land development code has become more stringent, so they have a lesser standard. It does happen. But when someone files a development order, unless there is something that tells us to review otherwise, we review under the current sections of Chapter 3.
Okay.
Really?
Yes?
So let me understand this, just to clarify really quickly. Somebody comes in, there's a zoning case, right? It's approved. It's approved at the standards of, say, 2005. City council passes different standards in 2006 or 10 or whatever, okay? They come back in for their master concept plan approval. And we can look at density, intensity, but we can't touch what was approved in 2005 as far as the more kind of, I'm going to call it cultural standards, not the bare bones, density, intensity, but all those other things that you would require in a development order. So when they come in for their development order, they have to do what we approved in 2005?
No.
Okay, because I'd like to see, how can we marry that to this process?
I think you have the opposite of what we're saying. What we're saying is, if somebody gets their zoning in 2005, they get their master concept plan approved as part of their zoning, because this is plan development, not a conventional zoning. They go in, 2010 occurs and they need the extension, or they're going in for their development order. We can skip the extension part first. Staff reviews it under whatever changes you have made to Chapter 3, so lighting, any changes, that goes up. If you, there's been times at zoning hearings where I've told council, "Do not put in certain conditions because you may have development standards that are more stringent, and you do not want staff to be forced to a lesser stringent condition." Now, if they have something in the zoning ordinance that specifies buffers shall be this, or lighting shall be this, they cannot follow the new code, they have to follow what was in the zoning ordinance because that's more specific to that property. And that could either be because somebody did a relief, or it could be because council insisted that we wanted certain sound elements, we wanted certain lighting elements in there for extra security.
And just as an example, Village Walk. The earlier phases of Village Walk have one lighting style. The later phases have a different lighting style. So as they've gone through and the code has evolved in Chapter 3, we have evolved their approvals. So as you change your regulations, we enforce those regulations on development orders that come through the door.
And you would do that, even if it was administratively, you would do that?
Right.
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
They have no choice.
Yeah.
It's the code.
Okay. Okay, council, any other questions or comments? Yes?
So, five years, we review, we, all the stuff that is of concern, standards, that's done already, so that's good. So at five years, we could look at uses, and at nine years, we can look at density and have them come before council at both those times.
That is a policy decision. Those are valid options.
Sure, well, that's what we're doing here.
So you're making the suggestion that we do two, one at five years?
And one at nine, instead of five and seven.
And one at nine.
Yeah. Yeah, and that way, you're not creating uncertainty for whoever that person is. Five years, look at the uses, are those appropriate for what's growing around the community? And nine years, look at the density, intensity, if that's something that's also appropriate at that time.
But both times come back to council.
To council, both times to council.
Both times to council.
That way, you cut out some of the expense at seven and, you know.
Do you want to make a motion to that?
I would make a motion to that effect, Mr. Mayor.
There's a motion to that effect. Does everyone, yeah, and there's a second. Does everyone understand the motion?
Sure.
You guys, do you guys understand it?
The only thing I'm having some confusion on is staff would always be reviewing for consistency with the comprehensive plan. So when it provided its review at the four-year, it would look at density and intensity, you know, for council's consideration at their hearing in year five for the four-year extension.
Because the language says for comprehensive.
Normally, that's what, you know, you don't apply part of a comp plan and not apply the other part. It seems...
True enough.
I'm having problems with that.
Okay, so I guess basically what we're saying is, review both at five and four, a five and four.
Do a five-year, then a four-year, and then another two-year permissible. And you're not married to four years, you can go lesser than four years.
That's the maximum you would be able to receive.
Yeah, when the time comes to extend it, if there's a particular problem that you're worried about, you could just say, "Look, we're going to extend it." There's no guarantee of right to an extension of four years.
You can extend it for a day.
Yeah, exactly. Okay?
Well, then, Mr. Mayor, if it's four years, then we should just do four, and they come back every four, and just have one instead of five and nine, and just keep it simple so that people don't have to try to calculate and figure this stuff out. Four, and then come back in four, and then come back in four.
No, yet, they're done. Nine years are done.
Okay.
Nine years are done.
So five, four, and then another four.
Five? No, five and four is nine. Right?
Right.
I want to make sure.
Wait a minute, let me get my calculator up.
So they'll be under review then for uses and density at five and nine years?
At five and...
Nine, to city council. So I would amend my motion to be that.
To do, to do five and four, they both come back to council. It's as simple as that.
Okay, as I understand, five years is when you approve it the first time at zoning hearing. Then, after the five years, they want an extension. That would be the four that they could ask for, so that comes up to nine. Do you then allow one more time, or is that done?
No, I mean, I think the way it is now, that you, after nine years, right now, they're done.
That's staff's recommendation, but I kept hearing five, at year five and then year four. There is no more four.
No, that was your confusion, not ours. Okay. That belongs to you.
So there is no review at nine?
You're done.
Yeah, you're done.
They're...
You have a review, you have, excuse me, you have a review at the end of five years, okay? And then at the end, you know, I mean, that's it.
The amount of, the period, the master concept plan would remain valid is the same under your proposal as it currently is. It is, the extensions are timed differently where there's only one, and it's a period of four years.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
So I guess I misunderstood, because, okay, thank you. We were talking about a five and seven, they're coming in for a review at five, and they're coming in for a review at seven?
No.
No, ma'am.
Okay, then I did misunderstand that.
The initial period of validity is five years, that no change. We work under the same...
And at the end of five years, they would come back?
They will come back in, and the extension that this council could extend would be four years.
But what was, okay, and the confusion comes is that at the end of five years, we would extend it for two years. And then, no, I'm just saying, the first proposal, and at the end of two years, we could extend it for another two. That's what was proposed. The shortcut to that was to go ahead, and at the end of five years, extend it for four years.
Yes, sir.
And just skip that other process.
Right.
But at the end of four years, you're done. Then you got to go through the whole process all over again. Is everybody okay with that?
Got it.
That's indicative of the motion?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I will, it was not what the motion was. I will withdraw my motion and restate that motion because I'm understood we're having a review at nine. Okay, so to have a county, city count, basically what I'm doing is I'm removing a review and creating an extent, and asking you to create a four-year extension instead of a two-year, right?
Ta-da.
Yeah, so that would be, I'll withdraw my former motion and make that motion, Mayor. Thank you for your help.
You're quite welcome. We have a motion and, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second? Any other discussion? I thought not. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slecta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Okay, as it applies to DRIs, explain what you were requesting there.
We...
Yeah, I know.
I'm almost nervous to bring up the old timeline again. If, under the current approval...
Which, which doesn't exist anymore.
Which doesn't exist anymore, or won't exist in 30 days.
There you go.
You would have a period of five years before your master concept plan was expired. A development of regional impact, as part of their approval, establishes a build-out date. Now, because these projects are larger and because they include multiple phases, generally, they take longer than five years to develop. As a result, as opposed to having a strict five-year validity for a master concept plan on a DRI, we're proposing that we marry that build-out date and the expiration date. So that when you look at a DRI and it has a build-out date, the Regional Planning Council looks at it, the state looks at it, everybody approves a build-out date, and then you are approving a master concept plan associated with that development of regional impact, those two dates would be identical. So you don't have to worry about one expiring while the other one is valid. And if there would be any changes made to that build-out date, the master concept plan validity would still adjust accordingly. So if that build-out date was moved up or moved back, the validity of that master concept plan would be the same.
Okay.
Does that make sense? It's just to try to keep things simple.
Right, right. And so the consequence, I mean, but so far, the city of Benita Springs, the chances of having any new DRIs that come within the city of Benita Springs, unless we do some pretty aggressive annexing, not a whole lot of land left out there, right? We got a couple.
It would be rather small.
We got a couple.
And you may see older DRIs come back in to ask for this, but...
Are you? All right, and so, you know, again, just to try to muddy the waters, I mean, clarify this a little bit more, is that the change would be, all the smaller things, we've already decided that. When it comes to the DRIs, you want to go ahead, and for the sake, quite frankly, of the developer and the DRI, they've gotten that permission. It takes a long time to do these developments. So you can't expect them to keep continually coming back in, coming back in, coming back in, because they've already got things started and underway, basically, in a lot of times. And how would it be to come back in, "Look, we're halfway through this, and now you want to change it?" Right?
Yes, sir.
Is that basically your rationale?
You summed it up perfectly.
Okay. Council, any questions about that? Are you okay with the idea of these DRIs with making it consistent with the length of the DRI?
I just consider that, Mayor, if I may, that we consider that, yes, but that we just continue to hold the public hearings and keep, you know, whatever needs to be in the public with the process public.
There wouldn't, if they develop within the period of their build-out date, there wouldn't be an extension, and there wouldn't be a public hearing.
Very good.
Okay.
Right. Okay. All right, so everyone's okay with that? Okay, we're going to go ahead and include that in the proposal in this second reading, okay?
No, not from what's written.
What do you got first next?
reinstatement of vacated master concept plans.
Okay.
And this basically occurs when somebody does not follow your instructions and extend the approval, and their master concept plan expires. There is currently no process that allows them to reinstate it, even if they file a day after the expiration. This proposed language would at least provide a process for them to reinstate a plan that has expired.
Okay, right now, the plan, the process to reinstate it is to start all over again?
Yes, sir, that's exactly right.
Okay, so even, now, this would, this proposal that you have would even apply to one that has been through this. Let's say they've nine years, or nine years is up, they could come back in if, and have this reinstated under this process that you're proposing, is that true?
No, sir.
It's got to be within the nine years. In other words, somebody has to have waited five years and three days, and they're like, "Oh, we messed up. Can you reinstate it?"
And it always happens within a month, is when we always get the phone calls. It expired about a month ago, expired six months ago.
So this does not include one that goes past that nine years?
No, sir.
They're done after nine years. All right? Council, you understand? Okay, so just within there, if they mess up and they miss their five-year date, this allows some... this allows some process to go ahead and get them reinstated.
Yes, sir.
All right, and that process would be similar to, excuse me, but this process would be similar to the process that they would normally go through?
Yes, sir.
Through City Council, right?
Yes.
Okay, questions, Counsel?
Yes.
Yes.
It just concerns me, I'm not quite sure what the answer is here. Because on the one hand, we want to be able to, if people are having an economic difficulty getting something done, we want to be able to help them do that. On the other hand, I don't want to see people who kind of like game the system about it. So I don't know what the answer is to that, and, you know, most people are doing the best they can with what they got, so...
My experience with these situations generally involves two distinct scenarios. The first is someone that originally entitled the property, still owns the property, and missed the date. And usually, we get the phone call a month to six months after it's expired. "I didn't realize it was expiring. I forgot. Help me through the process." The other situation involves someone purchasing a property where the master concept plan has already expired. And in those cases, they had nothing to do with the original entitlement, they had nothing to do with missing required dates. They simply have property and they need to reinstate the master concept plan in order to begin construction. Now, there could be other examples, but in my experience, those are the two that tend to be the majority of cases.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
How does this work in cases, then, where something is half-built and they really don't have an intention to go much farther? Or let's say that because they don't have the capability, they've dropped the project, and the thing's just sitting there, half-done. How do we assist in, assist the neighborhood with having to deal with something like that?
If you remember correctly, when we were looking at the time period, the time period, the clock only runs until a project is built or until 20% of the site is constructed according to the development order. So if you have constructed, for the sake of argument, 21% of your site, there is no more time clock. You are, you have the ability to develop over time, as long as your permits remain active.
Thank you.
Yeah, so Counsel, essentially, this won't affect anything after nine years. You got to do over. This just, this has just given relief to people who've forgotten that five-year, now have forgotten that five-year period. And that's basically it. And in the community, really doesn't lose anything from that because they got to go through the process anyway.
Yes, sir, it still comes before you.
Is that correct? I think that this is a good thing. But Counsel, what do you think?
Yep.
Okay, good head nod? Good. Carry on.
That is all we have for plan development approvals.
Okay.
Now we can talk about agriculture. But before we go ahead, there was, I had a tough time reading the slides last time, so before we go through...
Yeah, I know, they're so small, yeah.
Well, they're not this time. Currently, there was a question as to what the entitlements were and what the process was for these uses. A bed and breakfast currently requires a special exception in the AG1 and AG2 district. It is not permitted in the AG3 district. A police and sheriff substation is permitted only if it's there already. So a new police or sheriff substation would not be permitted. A post office is only permitted if it's already there. A private onsite recreation facility is existing only, or if you want a new facility, it's a special exception. And a non-commercial school is existing only. So no charter schools or private schools could be built. To the first item, bed and breakfast, I know there was some talk about how this could fit into the San Carlos Estates-Tropic Acres neighborhood. First of all, why you would want to do it. Secondly, if you had it, how would it function? And so I found a couple of pictures of bed and breakfast. These tend to be in a mix of neighborhoods. This facility in Venice, I know, is located about four blocks south of the main street. Mount Dora, a little bit different of a city, more antiquing, similar house on the left-hand side. Wilton Manners is a much more residential neighborhood on the East Coast. And if my map is correct, this bed and breakfast is located in the middle of a residential neighborhood. So in terms of the ability for a bed and breakfast to be compatible and consistent with the neighborhoods there, it is possible. And when we were looking through the list of uses for the agricultural zoning districts after our workshop with the residents of San Carlos Estates and Tropic Acres, the intent was, what changes can we make to leave them alone? Which was the general consensus of what we heard. So when you see a mix of uses up there and wonder what the connection is, that's the connection. If we reviewed and looked at a use and felt that it could be done in a way that if we reviewed it, made sure it was compatible, could fit into that neighborhood. And bed and breakfast was one of those uses. Was there any concern about that?
How about that, you're suggesting this done by special exception or be done?
Administrative approval.
Administratively.
So they would still file an application with our office, and we would still review it prior to any building permits or...
And right now, it's not an allowed use at all. Is that correct?
It is a special exception.
It is allowed by special exception now, so they can do this out there by special exception now. What you're proposing is to do it administratively?
Yes, sir.
Just getting clarification. Comments?
To John's comment about why would they do it there, it's because it's beautiful, San Carlos Estates.
Oh, yes, sir.
Yeah, that's right. The, I would prefer to keep it at a special exception rather administratively. I have spoken with a number of the neighbors out there, but at the same time, I, if it's something like bringing commercial into a residential district, even though it's allowed, I'd like to have a public comment.
Sir.
And may I ask one other question?
Yes, sir.
You made a point about schools, non-commercial, and charter schools, and you said they're not allowed. They're not allowed unless they're permitted by...
If they're already there, existing only.
Okay, and if we want to create a charter school out there, how do we do that?
Right now, you can't.
Okay, so we need to discuss that at some point.
Yes, sir. When we get to that, there is, there is a distinction between Lee County schools and private schools or charter schools.
I recognize that.
When that comes up.
Okay. Let's pick these off one by one here. So bed and breakfast, are you all satisfied to do this by special exception? Okay, good, next. And next, we're going to talk about police and sheriff substation. And one more time, round block, just real quickly.
Police and sheriff substation is...
Currently.
Currently only allowed if it is existing, meaning the site was constructed prior to the change in the zoning ordinance. There are no police and sheriff substations in the facility now, which means under your current regulations, there will not be a police or sheriff substation.
So they're not allowed out there under no conditions?
That is exactly right.
And so your proposal would be to...
To allow them through administrative approval.
Through administrative approval. Counsel, what's your feeling on that? Are you content to leave it as it is, which is a prohibited use, or would you like to allow it by special exception only or by administrative approval? Councilwoman Simmons?
Special exception.
By special exception? Bill?
I don't know what we could use.
Yep, just in case. That way, it doesn't preclude it if it seems necessary.
Makes sense.
Is that okay?
Yep, makes sense.
Let's allow by special exception. All right, post office. Counsel, do you feel the same way about that? By special exception?
They're not going to be building anymore.
They're not building anymore.
I don't think this, yeah, I think it's slim to none, right?
I had wanted to, there was mixed feelings in this, and I have spoken with people before, and some people thought it was not to be discussed, you know, that thought it was. And I wanted to at least provide a little bit more information, so I made the mistake of calling the post office to ask for what they look for in a new site, which I'm sure has me on a list. But they also provided no information. So I cannot tell you what the post service looks for in a new site, other than the fact I don't think they're building any right now.
Yeah, this may be a, kind of a solution, looking for a problem, right?
Could be, but it's like the substation issue. I don't see anybody asking for it right now, but I don't know what's going to happen around or in that neighborhood five, 10 years from now, and if it's a use that could fit in, could be compatible.
Counsel, do you want to allow by special exception, or do you just want to leave it prohibited use?
May I ask a question?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Post office, if you say post office, does that also mean private post office? Because we have an indic, yeah, there's like, you know what I'm saying? So we should be careful because that might allow a commercial use of these pickup stations or whatever.
If we specify United States parcel service.
Post office, United States post office, yeah. I don't think they're coming along either, but what the heck, you never know.
Yeah, yes. Janet?
I don't know, something about that, I just think of the large trucks that come and go from the post office to pick up the mail on those residential streets, which are kind of residential. There are people living there. And I'm just not so sure about those unintended consequences of, yes, it would be convenient to have a post office possibly in the future. We never know, but I'm not so sure about the increased traffic that might come with it.
And that's the beauty of the special exception process.
Yeah, exactly.
Because if they build a facility like is next to us here, that's much more intense than some of the other smaller post offices, which...
Yeah, if they want to do a Chakalaski-type little post office thing right there.
Yeah.
It may be, and as a matter of fact, the community may come there to ask them to do that, and they may ask them to do that. And if it's prohibited, it's prohibited. But if you allow by special exception, at least it has to come here, and you, Counsel gets to weigh all the stuff. Would that be all right, Counsel?
Sounds good.
Okay, let's put it there. All right, next, private onsite recreation.
And I outlined this a little bit the last hearing, but I probably need to make the point a little bit more clear. If, for some reason, the residents of Tropic Acres or San Carlos Estates, which is the only area we are discussing, this change would apply, were to form an association, and after forming that association, decide, "We wouldn't mind having tennis courts," or "We wouldn't mind having a swimming pool and a clubhouse." Right now, that, you would be requiring them to go through a special exception for approval. And the application that IBE brought forward several months ago now was for a recreation building. And that approval took approximately six to seven months before they found a definitive answer. It was not a controversial issue. It only impacted residents of that neighborhood, which is why we're talking about onsite recreation. We're not talking about anything that exists off of property, not controlled by an association or a group that wants to build the site. And if one of these neighborhoods wants a pool, wants a tennis court, bocce court, clubhouse, should they be required to go through the public hearing process when the only impact is internal and not external? And that was the purpose behind the proposal.
Okay. Counsel, you understand that? What's your feelings on this? Any feelings?
May I?
Go, go right ahead.
I know, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Oh, go right ahead.
So this means that somebody can't purchase a lot and say, "I'm putting in a swimming pool, and, you know, it'll be a private pool, and we'll charge people from the neighborhoods." It has to be from inside a community plan development, or a homeowner's association has to come forward and say, "We want to do it in this limited area." It cannot happen on a street that doesn't have a homeowner's association?
There would have to be a controlling entity. So I won't say homeowner's association, but that is a common...
There has to be a controlling entity that is a group entity other than just the property owner?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
So, so under that kind of scenario, I don't know, five or six people get together and form their own little group association and say, "We want to put in five tennis courts and a swimming pool here that we can all use together." They can make an application.
Yes, sir.
They can make an application and/or whatever. So in that particular situation, the effects wouldn't be just internal because they would be making an application to put five lots together to do their own thing, and there would be adjacent property owners involved, correct?
That could be the case. However, there, under your review criteria, you do look at off-site impacts for these applications. Now, whether we handle it administratively or whether it comes before this council, the criteria is still there.
Counsel, I'll just chime in here. I really appreciate you looking into this, and under most circumstances, it's probably a good idea. But I'm, I myself am content to leave this as a special exception, mainly because I don't see it happening a lot, and I think that it may open up some opportunities for some things that you don't want to see to come in there. And you may end up shooting your own self in the foot.
Sounds right.
You okay with that?
Okay.
Okay, let's go ahead and, let's move along to schools, non-commercial.
All right. This is your Benita Springs Fitness and Preparatory Academy. And the reason why I took a picture of this is because the schools that we're discussing are not Lee County District schools. They are either charter or private schools, K through 12. Not trade schools, bartending schools, those are not included here. It's basically Bishop Row type operation.
So charter schools aren't considered to be commercial?
Correct. Commercial is going to be trade.
Okay.
To make a simple connection.
Trade schools, beauty college?
Yes, sir.
Welding.
Yeah, yeah, welding, welding, well, that's very good.
Old school.
Yeah, okay.
This has to do with basically charter schools and private schools.
And so your proposal was to do that administratively as well?
Yes, sir. And the reason why is because Lee County School Board currently has the ability in every zoning district to locate a school. This would simply provide the same opportunity for a charter school or a private school.
Yeah, so when the Lee County School Board, I'm right to, when the Lee County School Board makes an application, they have their own rules, right?
They generally don't tend to make applications, sir.
Yeah, they generally don't, yeah, okay. Okay, go ahead.
No, you're saying you want to do that administratively?
Mm-hmm.
Internally?
For the use. Now, they would still be required to file a development order application, which is more than the school district does.
I guess I would respectfully disagree and think that should become before City Council.
Would you like that as a...
Special exception.
Require, okay, special exception?
Mm-hmm.
For Lee County School Districts?
No, this is not, this is for non-commercial schools.
Mayor?
Yes, well, go ahead. Yes.
Go ahead.
Just two things. Schools, non-commercial, I think they need to go through zoning. Just, you know, we had a situation, the DRGR, which, you know, okay. And then I'd like to see schools commercial for agricultural uses. So if somebody wants to teach beekeeping or have a stable for horses, or if that's covered under something else, is stable, is a riding academy?
We might not have, under state law, the ability.
To have a riding academy is under the right to farm?
To regulate.
Okay, very good. So under the right to farm, you would be able to have instructions on... I would not know.
That, it...
Yeah.
If you've got an existing agricultural operation, and you've also, in addition to that existing agricultural operation that's a bona fide agricultural use, have instruction, I don't think you're going to be able to regulate. If you have a standalone instructional that is not a part of a bona fide agricultural use, that's when you can start looking at different regulations.
Okay, then would a riding academy be, you know, we love kids, we're losing the ability to go horse out and ride it somewhere. So to have a stable and riding academy?
Is it part of an active ranch? You know, it depends on what else is going on on the property as to what type of controls you can place onsite.
Well, you might have experience with this. In Pine Ridge, they have a riding academy. They have a stable along Goodlett Road. You probably drove past it and seen it.
Do I look like an equestrian?
You look like an equestrian.
Better than the bottom part of an equestrian.
So how do we allow a riding academy there without having to attach it to a ranch? Because eventually, we're becoming suburban, we'll be urban, it might, the ranch might go away, as ranches here have. And how do we allow the riding academy or the beekeeping thing or the whatever maintain its use without cutting off the, you know?
Councilman, if you would allow me to bring that back to you at a later hearing, so I can make sure that i's are dotted and t's are crossed, because there are going to be some things that we need to make sure we don't try to regulate in areas so that we don't have the authority to regulate.
Absolutely, my pleasure. Thank you.
Okay, so to the point here, Pete, I think what you've, Councilman, what you've, want to do this by special exception. Schools, non-commercial, by special exception, is that correct?
Correct.
And everyone's okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, and you will, at a future date, come back and give us an opinion about whether we have even the ability to regulate agricultural-type uses that are arguably schools or whatever.
Education or instructional.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, carry on.
All right. Farmers markets. This was a portion of the comprehensive plan amendment that you transmitted. And the proposed text in Land of Elmer Code, just to kind of go through it briefly. What you're looking at is the authorization of the use within commercial and industrial districts. Council would still approve these uses through a special event permit, but the use itself would be legal. You're limiting, or we are proposing that you limit the number of privately operated farmers markets to two at any one time. And the language that's in front of you also includes standards for cleanliness, hours of operation, how a site will function, restroom facilities, so that when you go to a farmer's market, you can expect certain things to be in place like you would in normal business. I don't know if there were any questions. My notes were a little bit vague on this section, so if there's any areas you would like me to go into in any more detail.
All right, any questions about this?
Yes, yes, Mayor.
You all good with this?
Mayor.
Yes, go right ahead.
John, just clarification. Farmer's markets, so if we operate promenade and we do our city one, there can't be another farmer's market at the same time?
Same day.
Same day?
You can have two privately operated farmers markets simultaneously. But if you look at, at the regulations in what can be sold and defined as a farmer's market, I don't believe that the promenade location would fall under that definition mainly because of the types of products they sell. A farmer's market is going to be food related and it's not going to be more of a craft variety.
Okay, explain, it's a permitted use within commercial and industrial zoning areas. And explain that permit process and the people who will be issuing those permits. There'll still be a special permit required?
They will be coming to you for a special event permit.
Special event permit, as they do now?
As they do now. But the use of a farmer's market, which is not currently included in your Land Development Code, including definitions and standards of operation, we've included those here along with identifying that the use is, is permitted with a special event permit.
So, so, so under this, you know, we would have some control over it because they, they would have to come here and apply for the special event permit again. So that way, if we, we wouldn't end up with a proliferation, we'll say, we, we could kind of throttle that back.
Yes, sir. You would keep the numbers under control. You would also, under the proposed language, have the ability to monitor the site, to ensure cleanliness, to ensure that the site is functioning. And you would also have the ability to, to approve the special event permit when it comes before you. So if an operator does not operate well, one year, if they come back for you for another farmer's market, you would have the ability to review and judge accordingly.
Okay, Pete?
Is this, can we take public comment on this or solicit, Barbara, did you want to say something on this or I guess actually? Would that be okay at this time or?
We'll take public comment at the, um,
Okay.
At, at, before we vote on this.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, any, any questions so far as that and we're, we're good. Alright, let's go ahead and go on to the next one.
Okay. This is another section of your code that is in need of updating. I don't know if this ever was changed from the original writing. Uh, what we're looking to do is to keep residential fences and commercial fences and residential project walls. There will now be a requirement to keep them in good repair. Uh, if you have a residential project fence, we want you to keep the good side of that fence out so the functional portion of that site is in towards the property. We also, the reason why I took these pictures is because for a residential project fence, there is no requirement for the landscaping on the outside of the wall. So, so I didn't embarrass anybody. I took a picture of the city's wall with no landscaping and then another project wall that was.
If your intent was not to embarrass somebody, that's not working.
Oh, my mistake. So this, this kind of compares what the current regulations are towards a little bit more of what we're requesting from the council.
Okay, uh, so, so at this time, when you see these residential developments, they could actually put their buffering on the, buffering on the inside of the fence right now?
On the front, no, sir. But when you see the back and the rear of the site is where they have a little bit more flexibility.
So it won't, won't affect the kind of what people usually visually see. It'll be the neighbors on the sides that may see this big blank wall. They'll be required to put, put landscaping on the outside.
And what really brought attention to this was a controversial project to remain nameless that proposed a wall around the entire facility and there was no requirement for landscaping there. So as a result of learning that lesson, we wanted to bring this forward, so the council.
Or no, no requirement that the buffering itself be on the outside of the fence?
Or the sides and the rear of the property.
Or the sides and the rear of the property?
Yes, sir.
Okay, understood.
And you also will have proposed language in there for agricultural fences and what can be controlled and what can't be. Now that we're looking at allowing agricultural portions of the city, we probably need to have standards for agricultural fencing, stating what we can do and what we cannot do. And that is included in your proposed text.
Okay, and so, so far as private, single-family residential, are you, are you planning on having buffering, any type of plantings in front of that? Or this is just for planned developments?
Just for residential project fences. If you have a single-family house, you would be able to do what you can do today. Same regulations in terms of height and location. What really changes is the requirement to keep that fence in good order and keep the good side of that fence out.
But the, the general public here doesn't, doesn't have to plant, you know, set the fence back, plant buffering on the outside?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Questions from council, yes?
Can you just speak briefly to, are you having changes about agricultural fencing? Uh, can you speak about that really quickly because there's rights involved with that, like?
Well, that's what I'm saying. We identified the areas where we could not regulate. And so, let me get to the exact language.
Well, just.
The only regulation is we're preventing barbed wire within 100 feet of a residential unit.
That's a good idea.
For agricultural property. That's the only thing we've really looked at doing.
Okay, so as far as hard wire, being able to use that with?
You can use it for agricultural purposes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I want to know.
Alright, council, you got any problem with any of this? Alright, are we gonna, we gonna, we gonna make the city, we gonna require the cities to conform to our own standards?
Actually, we excluded ourselves. And the reason for that is not for the obvious thought.
That's the US Congress.
Because we're cheap, because we're cheap.
It's because a lot of the walls that the city has put up have been for visual and sound barriers for residents when roadways have been widened. And those cases, more often than not, there's not enough room for a wall and landscaping. So as opposed to requiring something that may or not be able to fit, if it can fit, the city would like to do it, obviously they will. But you cannot create land out of no land.
Nice try, but we, the city will have to, we can inflict that upon ourselves if we so choose.
Yes, sir, you may.
Okay, any other questions? We okay with this?
Mm-hmm.
Good. Go ahead.
Alright, two more slides and we're almost finished. This deals with setbacks from bodies of water and decks. Currently, I hope I get the right button and don't turn this off. If your house has to be 25 feet away from a water body, there cannot be anything higher than 42 inches from that, in that 25-foot setback.
John, I'm sorry, real quick, you said 25 feet. I heard you, but I didn't hear it.
25 feet from, what I've done is I've drawn in a little seawall here to make it easier to measure back from that water body to the structure. That is a required setback right now. We've had several people talk about building decks off of their second floor and for a number of reasons. One, because people like to have decks on their second floor. Another one is we've had a few property owners that have purchased older homes and have storage on the first floor because their house is elevated. And their only entrance or exit is the front door. They have no back door. And so with this setback requirement, you can't even put a balcony to put stairs to have a rear exit to your house. But I think the purpose of this regulation when it was written was to prevent what's, everyone's called the canyon effect. And to protect, protect few corridors. So if you're standing in your backyard, your neighbor does not have buildings down to the water body preventing you from looking to the sides of your house. To keep that intent intact, what we're proposing is if you build a deck on the back of your house, if you've built it to the 25-foot setback line, you would be allowed to build a 10-foot deck, meaning 10 foot into, closer to the rear of your property. But eight feet from grade must remain open. The only thing that can go there are columns that are part of the structural support of that deck and they cannot be wider than four inches. So.
And John, I'm sorry again, believe me, I am. How far do those columns have to go down? What, what's code there? What's required?
Go down?
Well, don't they have to go down for structure?
Into the ground?
Yes, they do, but when, they're not going to be visible.
Oh, no, I, I understand. I'm just curious.
I'm not sure.
Whatever the Southern Standard Building Code is.
Yes, sir. There is, you are correct, there is a standard. I think it depends upon the size of the deck as to the depth of the support columns.
The weight, the soil factors, there's a lot of factors engineers have to decide to do that.
I don't believe there's an actual number.
And again, I'm just curious, what normally here in Benita, how far down before you hit water?
Depends on what portion of the city.
I, I, and I know, right, I, right.
Some places, it's a matter of a couple of feet.
Where this would be taking place, probably three feet.
Yeah, some places could be 10 feet.
Well, you know that. But three to 10.
Just guessing.
More or less, yeah.
It's a guesstimate, but it's going to be right around there.
Thank you.
Okay. This is one other thing I wanted to show you. If you have stairs going back to the deck or anything that is constructed, we measure the setback line once you reach 42 inches. So at 42 inches is where you need to meet that, what will, has proposed 15-foot setback from the property line. Does this kind of display a little bit better?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, nice try.
Thank you very much, Dr. Steve.
Anybody, uh?
It is a 130 scale.
Counsel, you have any comments about, comments about this? Yes?
We allow pool gauges up to seven feet, don't we, to near that seawall?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I have real mixed feelings about this, strangely enough, since it comes under the heading of what I do for a living. But, um, I, I understand that there's arguably a hardship with some of the existing houses and that kind of thing like this. But if people can do this, they will do this.
Yes, sir.
That's just the way it is. I mean, everybody wants to be as close to the water as they can. And currently now, if you built a new house and you designed a new house, you would design the, the deck to be at the edge of the 25 feet and you would start back from there.
Yes, sir.
Alright, and, and so, so, but in this proposal, they would be able to go ahead and put their house next to the 25 feet and build within that.
Yes, sir.
Uh, my personal opinion is that, um, I don't agree with the 10-feet portion of it because I understand how there, there can be an argument that an existing house, they, they need to put a stairway so they can get out the back. But they don't need 10 feet to do that.
Oh, no, sir.
Okay, so I, I would be in favor of allowing it to be six feet. That would allow you to put an area where you could get outside of your house, right? There could be a tip type of deck. You could put a couple of chairs out there, but it, it wouldn't, I think six feet's plenty. Uh, and, and then you would be able to attach that. So I, I would make the argument that's, that six feet would be plenty. And then I think that, that strikes, that allows people the, the safety of getting out of their houses and, and it doesn't allow, you know, just everybody to go, well, I don't know, council, and, and I'll go to you. I mean, what's your ideas on this?
I was just going to say, no, I mean, I, can we, what are your thoughts on what he just said, I guess would be?
I, I think it, he's exactly right in the fact that if you want to provide someone access out the back of their house and they have an elevated house, it accomplishes that goal. But I think it goes, the, the question is, what do you want people to be allowed to do? There's concerns about canyon effects, which may or may not exist. I mean, I can plant, uh, eureka palms all along my property line and do more damage to your view than, than what's proposed here. But the mayor is exactly right. If you permit it, someone will build it. So if you believe it is appropriate for someone to construct a deck like we've shown, they will.
Good, good. Uh, Janet, go ahead.
I guess my question is, is that in, and not in every circumstance are people building the stairs straight out off the back? There, wouldn't they tuck them against the house and put them perpendicular to, right along the house?
Well, the reason why I kind of set this up, I.
Just so to illustrate the point of the 42 inches?
We have an application in our office right now that looks almost identical to this. And, and I showed the, the stairs out this way only because for properties that tend to be a little bit smaller, older lots, older homes, there may not, you either have to do a circular staircase or you have to bring it towards the canal. Those are the two options. Uh, but you're exactly right. If you have a little bit more property, you can have several, uh.
Right, but.
Yes, ma'am.
But, but changing this to six feet doesn't mean that, that will, that will make everybody put in a six-foot deck. It just means that their house has to be further away from the property to accommodate a bigger elevated deck.
And there are no, that we are not authorizing or proposing anyone be allowed to put a roof or any type of structure over that.
Right, but that 25-feet area, that is the edge of the overhang of the, technically, the edge of the overhang. Is, is it the wall? Is the overhang?
That's the wall.
It's the wall?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
That's why this is an encroachment into.
Yeah, yeah, so, so, and then that 10-foot measurement would be from the wall?
Yes, sir.
And your 25 feet measures from that to the wall or to the eve?
The wall.
Okay. Alright, and then you have a standard for how big an eve could be?
Three feet.
Three feet, nice. Okay, any other questions?
I'll go with your six.
What's your pleasure?
I'd go with your six feet.
72 inches.
Is that okay? Alright, six feet?
Sounds bigger.
72 inches, Stephen Slack just said.
So if I was doing my subtraction on open deck, the minimum rear setback instead of it being 15 feet would be 19 feet? Is what I would put and that would be.
Look at you.
Well, I have to figure out how to draft this, so.
And in that effort, there are bonus points if you can identify the section of this plan that's not.
She has come a long ways.
With the building code.
Alright, are you okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Alright, good. And you would tell us if we were doing something that was going to be a hardship for somebody or?
Well, somebody's going to go back and revise a plan, but they're still going to have the ability to.
Like, that never happens, does it?
Oh, no, sir.
Okay, alright. Okay, council, we all alright with that? Good head nod? Alright, carry on, please.
This is our last slide and this is the building that kind of started the shed ordinance rolling.
Thanks.
We received a few phone calls from the neighbors about this and they weren't particularly pleased of its existence. This is one of the few instances where I blatantly stolen something from Lee County in terms of their regulations. What they have done is they've limited the size of sheds and corrugated metal buildings to 240 square feet in residential districts. This is why, because right now there is no maximum standard. So if, you know, the council feels that this type of, of building is appropriate or you would like to have people have the ability to put that on your site, we currently have no regulations to prevent, to prevent it. Uh, we proposed something that would limit the size of those. It's about the size of the average Ted shed, Amazon shed, 10 by 12. So you would still have the ability to put a metal shed on your property, but the size of that shed is going to be restricted.
Okay, I thought, I thought we already took care of this, but that's, that's right.
I thought this was one of the items you wanted to kind of see pictures of.
Yeah, yeah. Counsel, are you okay with this, limiting the size to, of metal sheds, you know, to, to 240 square feet?
Could, could we just, I know you said it's like the size of Ted shed. Have you actually called them? Because I think I've got a 22 by 12. Does, I mean, I have to take.
Oh, you can buy them larger.
I, I know, but what I'm saying is that's pretty standard, 22 by 12, not a 35-foot, you know?
It's pretty big.
Yeah, but if you have a bunch of property together, you know, that might be appropriate for what you're doing.
But you live in an agriculturally zoned piece of property. This is for residentially zoned property.
I understand that.
Okay, Audrey?
I just want to also point out, when we talk about Ted sheds and such, the LPA was very specific as to materials. So this would apply to corrugated or galvanized steel or similar material. It would exclude the aluminum lap or clapboard style siding. So many of the samples you see at Ted sheds would fall under clapboard styles, you know, they look like little cute houses.
If you build an accessory structure that doesn't necessarily fall under this, this is metal buildings.
And they don't consider aluminum metal?
Well, we include aluminum as metal.
So what, what did you just say?
The aluminum, the aluminum siding that you've got this supposed to look like.
Aluminum siding, okay.
Yes, sir. That's where you make the distinction.
How about metal siding?
I'm fine with that.
How would, how would a metal sided building look different than this one?
If you would like to make that change, Mr. Mayor, I would have you.
I'm just saying.
Well, aluminum tends to be the common.
Because it, what we're talking about is not whether the structure itself is applicable. We're talking about what it looks like.
Yes, sir. And so if you, if there's a proposed change so that it's a metal sided building, I'm, I'm okay because the intent, I believe, is still there.
Well, I mean, I mean, I think we need to try, try to somehow architecturally differentiate between what is a, the, the aluminum, uh, standard aluminum or vinyl siding type of thing and what these Quonset hut metal structures are somehow within that language. I don't know how you're going to do it. I don't think we're going to figure it out here, but.
And I was going to say, I guess in theory, right, the Rubbermaid or some other product, any other, any other product?
Yes, sir, but you, Rubbermaid, while the, I'm sure if I called up Rubbermaid today and asked them for a 300-square-foot shed, they could build one for me, but they don't tend to.
They don't carry it in stock.
They don't tend to be able to purchase that at a floor market.
Right, and I guess I was just continuing the point, or any other material?
I would say non, I would say non-corrosive material. That way you, the intent is with the aluminum or vinyl siding, it doesn't rust, doesn't require maintenance. If you start.
The, the conversation that the LPA had regarding this, so the way they differentiated it was that these metal, metal buildings, right? Galvanized metal buildings, right? And that's all they described it as, would be limited to that size. But they exempted the buildings that had the siding, the aluminum siding on the sides?
Recognize that there were buildings, for example, RV trailers, um, things similar to pole barns, where they might be larger, plane gliders.
If you built, if you built a detached garage in your property and you built that detached garage in the same architectural style as your house, we don't want to regulate that in terms of the size. It's if you buy a. It's if you buy a manufactured shed or facility, building, and it is the corrugated metal, that's what we were looking at, limiting the size. This is not the only example. There are a couple of other examples where the same size, but an open design was used for carports, and that...
Just as a suggestion, why don't we give this language a try here? And I think that's probably the best thing to do. If it becomes a problem or if people start finding loopholes in it, we can always come back. And I think we're making a stab at trying to do away with these. I think that's the best we can do. Martha?
Something like architectural residential design that fits in with a residential, whatever.
Someday, somehow, if we can get through this, yeah.
I can bring something back at a later date.
Way later, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Anything else that you have for us?
No, sir. I think that's enough.
Okay, counsel, any questions before we go to public comment? Could you turn the lights up for us, Bill?
Sure.
Thanks, sir. At this time, we're gonna take public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this chapter four, well, please come forward.
Can you put up that deck with the stairs coming down?
Rick, I'm gonna ask you, go ahead and speak in the microphone, Rick. Go ahead. Thank you very much.
Rick Steinmeier, only eight feet high. Is that the minimum or maximum? Because if that comes off at the first living floor, especially in some places, the first living floor is 20 feet. And if you made it six feet out, you wouldn't have enough room to run a normal, you can't drop 10 feet and six feet in a stairwell. So I don't know if you'd be able, on a six-foot, whether you'd be able to build a stairway out through there. And of course, you're not gonna, you're not gonna enclose that, which I'm sure it'll try to screen it in, especially if there's a door going out on the ground floor. And what was the last project you were doing on the sheds? You have a 12-foot height limit off of what, the grade? Is that specifically? Because you could really put a 250-foot building up, way up over top of something, something.
Yeah, good questions. Good questions. Thank you, Rick. We'll get to those. Next speaker, please?
Yeah, Fred Forbes. I agree with everything that you've talked about. I want to make sure that something didn't get lost in translation, which can easily happen. When you were talking about 4-381, initially, some of the comments by John Domer was that, at the time, it would be reviewed, whether it was administratively or city council, that you would, for the first time, I might add, look at the uses that are permitted. And then all of a sudden, that discussion went from that to intensity and density. The devil is in the details. It's that 100-plus uses that get bundled in, and the council needs to have that ability to take it out. Audrey's shaking her head, and I'm glad to see that. I just want to make sure in the editing, you don't leave that. Other than that, I have no problem with what you did. Think you did a fine job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else at this time, please go forward?
Deborah McLean, author of The Banana Peel. I found the discussion about the two farmer markets limitation, the compatibility with promenade or neighborhood, to be very enlightening, and I hope that you will apply that with compatibility and use when it comes to homeless shelters and soup lines. I also found it very interesting that the DRI, meaning regional impact, there was discussion, and I need you to correct me if I'm wrong, but when Logan Boulevard decided it would connect to Benita Beach Road, I think the fire department earmarked a piece of property for a future firehouse. And I am suggesting that if we have a large development, that they earmark, not more commercial space, we certainly don't need it, but they should earmark and dedicate for free-to-us school, land-for-schools, private charter schools, whatever our need is, including additional substations for sheriff, fire, again, private school, charter school, and perhaps hospital. If a development is so large that it may impact us on a regional level, then they have to supply regional infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Good morning. For the record, Barbara Barnes Buchanan, resident of the city of Benita Springs. And I'm a certified planner, and I was previously or formerly assistant city manager for about eight and a half years. I wasn't intending to comment on this until I was sitting here. But on your master concept plan, I do practice privately on various small and larger developments permitting and things like that. Your master concept plan currently, I'm not representing a client today. This is just very general. You're requiring that it come back to you at a time where we are just slowly trying to climb our way out of a major, major economic recession. So the five-year period is an economic hardship. And I noticed that you do not have economic analysis of some of these actions that you're making. Each time you bring in an application and have it reviewed, and granted, it is a planner and an engineer's and a surveyor's wonderful work act to come back in, but, you know, you're not stimulating the economy. Each time you come in, just a real simple review is going to require close to $10,000. If you're really gonna come in and do it, and you're gonna have to address, you have to update the survey, you have to have somebody go back out, it all requires time and effort. So if you're really looking to stimulate the economy here in Benita, I think you need to look at some of the rules and regulations that you're putting forth, because you aren't. And you're going to stagnate it, and you're going to have the pockets where these master planned, or master concept plans exist. In addition, the city's been incorporated since 2000, the beginning of 2000. Granted, council didn't come in and take seats until April. But most of the master concept plans that you have were approved by the council. They've been approved by you. Now, there are maybe a few concept plans out there that were approved by the county before the city incorporated, but the council has looked at it. Maybe not all of you, or maybe some of all of you have. In fact, some of you have. But if you go back, I mean, it's already been looked at. Now, there are some, once again, that maybe you haven't looked at. But you're putting people through more steps. You're gonna stagnate the economy. And I don't think that you're sometimes getting a total picture of what the true economic impact is of these actions. And I, as a private planner, cannot truly represent to a potential purchaser the, you know, what the true amount that it's going to take to move a vacant project with entitlements to fruition. And I realize that my time is short. On the farmers' markets, once again, you have approved master concept plans with schedule of uses that indicate what ag uses you can and you can't have. I think you need to continue to try to provide an environment where we have a very competitive economy. And I'm not sure if you really want to prohibit certain areas. And I think it's gonna be really hard for staff to administer the farmers' market. And invariably, when you have the farmers' market, the green market, you get green products that may not necessarily be edible. So it's a real fine line of what you have out there. And people do like some of the fun things. They may look a little tacky, but there are times where it's still fun and it's still of interest to our tourists that come in. I just would like to see us keep in the back of our minds that we're really trying to bring our community back together and bring the economy up and try to support people and support businesses. So, thank you.
Thank you. Good for you. Nicely done. Anyone else this time? Please come forward. Seeing none. Counsel, what is your pleasure? Would you like to send us on? And before we, I have to say, I think Barbara is right on with this economic analysis of it. There's something that very rarely, we refer to it, but we refer to it in the abstract. We're always talking about whether it's good for economic development or not, but we do it sans proof. And so I think that a lot of times, I think we need to go ahead and get some input along that. Just like when counsel, before we make a decision, a lot of times, we think about what the economic impact is to the city government. We think about that a lot, but we really don't really have any facts or figures when it comes to the economic development or the economic impact arguably for the entire community. So I think that's a great comment. Audrey?
I just want to point out that the city has always allowed waivers of different items from applications, whether it's the initial application, if it did not make sense. For example, you might not require a small project to do a traffic TIS study, because it does cost a lot of money. And it is an Engineers Relief Act or Traffic Engineering Relief Act. So the city already has that in the process. And during the application process, there's submittal, but these items could be waived. Now, city council could say no to the waiver and make it harder, and that would be city council's call at the time it's coming in.
Counsel, just a suggestion, and then we'll go ahead and see if we can wrap this up. I think that, right now, I think that we probably will all be content with what we've got going on here. But I, along with Barbara's suggestion, I think that we should go ahead and have the EDC or somebody sponsor an economic kind of impact of what some of these changes, and even some of the other developments, things that we have to go by. There's no reason why our community development should be put in a position, quite frankly, of coming up with ideas how you may stimulate the economy. We've got, that's what we've got an economic development committee for, is to go ahead and make recommendations on how you might do that. And then the community development can chime in on what the actual benefit to the community would be or the detriment to the community be. So maybe we can approach those in a different venue then. All right? What's your ideas? Would you like to go through with this? Yes?
Send this back to staff to bring it back.
I don't...
The touches that we've made, or just pass it as conditioned with what we've done here.
I think that my personal, I think that we've pretty much come to a consensus, and are you able to go ahead and get this? We can pass this today. Is that correct?
As long as I read you the changes so that you understand what changes I will be making to this document.
Are you prepared to do so?
And if you're comfortable with those. I am prepared to do so. I've been taking notes.
Why don't you go ahead?
Okay. On page six, I would be starting on the changes. I would remove the administrative extensions of master concept plans, change the time. So there would be a one-time extension up to four years by council. I would also add on section D1, starting on page eight, that the application must include, unless waived, at a minimum, so that it's very clear that there could be waiver by city council prior to extension, the extension application going forward, if it was something such as the TIS or any additional capacity information, if it's not necessary. Okay? The next changes would start on...
Hold on. Yes?
Okay, as with, we had a comment by the public, just to make it clear, when we do an MCP or, I don't know about DRI, but we're going to be reviewing the uses, density and intensity at the five for the economic development. Part of what your comments were, that we have actually eliminated a review. So we're giving the benefit to the community in that way. It's a balance.
It is a balance, and you brought up Mr. Forbes' point, and I'm glad you did. On page nine, I will be keeping the language, so there's no change, but this language is in there. Prior to granting any extension, city council will review uses for compatibility with existing and approved development and may remove uses or add conditions to make the uses consistent with the Benita plan.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we'd be going to page 13 for the next change. I am not changing, so I'm taking out all the underlines and crosshatches and making it as it was to remain in the ordinances. Police or sheriff station, along with post office, now, I'd like to add the words US, so we're very clear. We're talking about the government post offices there. I'm gonna keep as-is, which means a special exception or existing-only special exception for private onsite recreational facilities. I'm also going to, on, change to special exception and not administrative approval, non-commercial schools. Now, I have in my notes that we will take back at another time discussion of stables. We just weren't stable enough to handle that. Hey, come on, guys. I have to have a little humor.
What about chicken coops? Sorry.
Hey, we're not gonna talk about that today.
Separate subject matter.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, thank you so much.
On pages 55 and 57, I will be doing my mathematical ability to change minimum rear setback. Right now, it currently says from 15 feet from the rear property line, both for setback and stairs and landing. I'm changing that to a 19-foot rear setback line, recognizing that six feet is the maximum for the setback and the encroachment for these open decks.
Okay. To Rick's, Rick had a really good question there that I had forgot to ask there. Do you consider this six-foot wide, what's, can, could they put the deck up to the top of the roof? Or are you gonna put language in there to where it can be to the floor level of how high out? I mean, how are you gonna control that?
You have a minimum of an eight-foot clearance. So if you're standing in your backyard, you will have eight feet that you can still look through.
So there's a minimum clearance underneath there?
There's a minimum clearance.
But they can make the deck as tall as they want to?
You can only have four feet of railing on top of that. The only adjustments that we will allow for...
There's a minimum, but could I just say, I wanna run the deck off the top of my roof?
You still have to meet the maximum height in your zoning district, so you're still not gonna go more than 35 feet.
I don't know if we want rooftop deck areas. I personally do, but you have one?
Well, I have a winner's walk in the middle of my...
If you place it in the...
Look at what she's got.
We're on the way.
Make sure she's up to code.
So there is no maximum height so far?
There is a maximum height.
There is a maximum. Well, the same as the house.
Yes, sir. But if you decide to put a porch or balcony in the middle of your roof, and you design the house to accommodate that, if you are beneath the maximum height, it's perfectly...
That's the way it exists now?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah. Except we would be extending it within six feet of the...
The only thing we would discuss here, that the change would be that balcony would be off the back of the house and not on top of the house.
So strangely enough, what we're doing is saying, we need a four-foot clearance, because you're allowed to go, was it 42 inches? You're allowed to go 42 inches up, right, in that area, but then it's eight-feet clearance underneath there. So that leaves four feet, just about four and a half feet.
Depending on the design, yes, sir.
Okay. That's it. That's complicated enough. I think we've done, our work's done there.
All DRIs, and just to go through all the questions real quick.
Yes, go ahead.
Ms. McLean had asked about concurrency reviews for DRIs. All zonings and development of regional impacts go through that for public facilities, schools, fire, roads, parks. That's all part of the review. And if somebody is wanting to be lacking, based on the level of services cities establish, they either have to provide those facilities or pay their proportion of fair share.
Gotcha.
And under any situation, whether that porch is there or not, you can screen the backyard up to eight feet from the property line. So regardless of the...
Roofline all the way out to the edge of the water, they could put a gigantic aviary out there if they wanted to.
I think that was all the public comment questions.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Counsel, you have any other questions? We prepared to go ahead? Yes?
I just want to make sure you understand what you're doing on 55, because, for example, and I'll use my house as an example. I have open decks, and we had to meet setback. So technically, if I wanted to, I could now change my setback to 19 feet and put the house to the 19 feet, and then move another, I guess, six feet for building additional open decks. That's how I read this.
I'm sorry, that says setbacks from bodies of water. Do you live on the water?
No. Page 55, there's two sections. There's 55 and 57. 57 applies to on the water. That would not be applicable to me.
Okay.
55 is the open decks for encroachment section that is read in, you know, and that would apply to all houses that you now could have, I'm just telling you, worst case, I don't think I would do it. I mean, I'm just telling you the worst-case person kind of scenario. I'm hoping I'm not the worst-case person. You kind of now have moved the setback by allowing an open deck a little, well, a little closer.
John, come on up here.
Maybe it's my math or my measurement capability.
I would suspect so, but go ahead.
It's, as you see it, that's it.
Now, what she's referring to is some other section that has, no?
Page 55, if I wanted to take my open deck and move it out, I wouldn't be able to enclose. You're correct. I would meet the 25 setback for the closed space. But for the space that my deck is now, I could build my deck out further. Don't give me a no, because I think you read it this way.
You carry on.
If I wanted to make my deck, say, a wider, bigger deck, I want to have... If I wanted to make my deck, say, a wider, bigger deck, I want to have more lawn furniture up there, I want to do platform, because I have four decks on my house, I could go out further based on this and be okay on the setbacks. Not on the open water, I'm talking about the non-open water.
On the rear, on the rear of the house. Does not change the side setback, but if you wanted to extend your porch, patio, deck, whatever you want to call it, an additional six feet towards the rear of the property, you could.
So, so you've also changed this to, you've also changed this to where that regular pieces of property, if you, if your rear setback, what's the rear setback on a property?
Normally, for residential districts, it's 25.
On a rear setback? 25. So you've applied this to landward properties as well?
Yes, sir.
Landmark properties as well.
But there's two different sections. So if the council feels differently on properties on bodies of water, as they do inland properties, one can be approved and one can be denied.
Well, Counsel, I don't know what the difference would be. Yeah, go ahead.
Can I ask a question that's probably irrelevant? But it's in my mind, so it's definitely irrelevant, probably. But if you're down on the beach, and I'm trying to, it would be just north of the Benita Bay Beach Club, there is a, I believe it's a greenhouse, and it has one of those overflow waterfalls, kind of like those. Is there a hot tub or some other body of water up there? Or is that simply the waterfall cascading down?
I would have to look at the building plans. I don't think it's a hot tub.
Right, I mean, it's beautiful, but are we, do we allow, and I know it's heavy, and I know it'd be elevated, do we allow water up on, we do?
Most of those houses that have been currently constructed, their pools will be elevated.
But I'm saying, like rooftop, that's what I'm getting at.
Oh, rooftop water?
We don't have like a water bed, or you're talking like the water bed or the hot tub restrictions, where you don't allow a hot tub on a platform. We do not, it's up to the engineers designing the house to have the structural components in place so it doesn't fall.
So it is, right, which, what I know, it's very, but it is allowed?
Yes, sir.
On the water or not on the water? In town or on the ocean?
Yes, sir, that's true. Really, the, the only difference is coastal has issues and height limitations along Hickory Boulevard.
Okay, to Audrey's point, this does apply. If you erase the water there and put a rear setback line, this does apply to rear set, to all, all properties.
There are, there are two proposed changes. One that addresses water bodies and one that addresses inland properties.
And we would be changing both of those to six feet.
They are identical languages, but they are two different sections, so...
Two sections, and the rationale for both applies.
Why would one be allowed to do it and one not?
Would there be a body of water there really has nothing to do with it?
Yes, sir.
Okay? Is, is Counsel okay with the six foot on either one of those? Okay. All right.
As long as you understand it.
Yeah.
Mayor.
Yes.
I'll just say that when you think about having a deck like that on the back of a house on a water body, you're not going to be overlooking your neighbor's, typically, your neighbor's backyard. Now, let's say, if you do that inland and you're on, you have, you have a neighbor behind your house, and you extend your property, you might be looking over their fence and invading their privacy. So I would be concerned about the inland property, the, the one that's on the water. I understand, you're not going to have somebody living right behind you, probably. So that might be a concern for me. And I don't know if we have to be equitable and allow both to do it, but I would think on the water body, be fair.
I think, I think because, my personal opinion, Counsel will get to enshame in here, I think that because it's six feet, and if you wanted to look out your window at people, you could. Anyway, I don't, I don't really see that there's that much difference there. I mean, personally, I think that, I think that if you're going to allow properties to do that, you're going to allow properties to do that.
I don't see any issues from my perspective, Mr. Mayor. And if we do see issues, you know we bring them back to you.
Counsel, are you okay with applicable to each property?
Yep.
All right? Head nods?
I'm not.